Good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the Yarmouth Board of Selectmen of May 2, 2023. This will be a hybrid meeting and therefore the following notice has to be read in the record. The notice is as follows. This is the formally advised and as required by General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 18 through 25, and pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on June 16, 2021, as extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023. The Yarmouth Board of Selectmen will hold a public meeting on Tuesday, May 2, 2023, at 5:45 PM, beginning with an executive session, an opening to the public no sooner than 6 PM in the hearing room, Yarmouth Town Hall, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass., 02664. The public is welcome to attend either in person or via the alternative public access provided below, and the Zoom information is posted on the Yarmouth website. We will, as the notice says, we will be returning to the public session as soon as we finish our business in executive session. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Can I just say so moved?
Sure.
So moved.
Okay, so we have a motion that we will go into executive session pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to a certain open-meeting law complaint filed against the Selectmen by Charles Day on August 15, 2022. Is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a second?
Yes, there's a second.
Okay, all those in favor?
I have a comment, Mr. Chairman. Is it safe to say that having this discussion in an open session would have a detrimental effect on the position?
If it wouldn't, that is the chair's determination.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? We are in executive session. Welcome to the public portion of the Yarmouth Board of Selectmen of May 2, 2023. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A first order of business is a public announcement, and I'm going to recognize Jeff Colby to make an introduction on a citation that we're going to be delivering to Bill Throuat, Throu.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, Jeff Colby, Public Works Director. It's a great honor to be able to recognize a town staff person that went above and beyond the call of duty. This is not the first time we've had a public works employee in the last couple of years provide lifesaving measures to a member of the public, and so I think it's great that the board recognizes those actions. This particular case happened to be, Bill was off duty. He was at a local retail establishment and provided lifesaving aid to somebody that was choking. So I think that's a great opportunity, but it just shows a little bit of his character and is willing to step up. He's a great worker for the town of Yarmouth and also a great member and citizen in the public, willing to step up and help people in a time of need. I think that's a great opportunity, and I think it's great that the board is recognizing him tonight.
Hero. Thank you very much, Jeff.
I appreciate it. She's going to hate me for it, because she was there with me too, and she's part of it, so.
Would you like to say a couple words?
No, it's, it's, we're team, man, we're team. Married 27 years, so.
Great. It's good to have partners.
You know, to call somebody and definitely there to help you, so.
Absolutely. Good, thank you.
No, I thank all you guys. Thank you, man, I'm humbled. No, thank you.
Thank you.
We have a citation here for you, Bill, and it's being granted by the Board of Selectmen, and I'm just going to read it briefly to you. It recognized, that's fine, no, we appreciate you being there. It recognizes you and your capacity as working as a water service technician, and it says "For extraordinary heroism, and be it further known that the town of Yarmouth extends its sincerest thanks and gratitude for the lifesavings efforts demonstrated Sunday, April 16, 2023." That this citation is duly signed by the Chairman, Board of Selectmen, on this second day of May in the year of our Lord 2023. And I've signed it, but I've, it's being presented to you on behalf of each and every Selectman, Selectman Forrest, and Selectman Hogan, and Selectman McGurran, and Peter Smith, who's not with us tonight, and myself. And it doesn't get any better than when your actions result in saving a human life. You must feel very gratified by that. And being that you told me that you were married 27 years, I have to give all the credit to your wife, because she's going to take it, she's going to take it anyway, we all, we both know that.
Yeah, yeah, not an easy one.
So again, we're very proud of you, and thank you for your service to the town, and thank you for your service to the person that could have been a victim.
Thank you. Are you ready to go shopping? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll see you online.
And if you're late tomorrow, work tomorrow, don't worry about it. I'll take care of it, I'll take care of it. Okay, next item is public comments. Chris Greeley.
Good evening, Christine Greeley from West Yarmouth. Unfortunately, I won't be able to stay for the whole meeting tonight, which I usually like to do, to see what you guys are all up to and the hard work that you do. It was particularly impressive, I think, at town meeting with the work that went into the planning, particularly for Article 18, was really quite extraordinary. But the comment and the reason I'm here tonight is I am getting to the point where I am exceedingly concerned and escalatingly concerned about the on-street parking that's taking place. And I'm extremely concerned about it, given that we're not even into the full, you know, sort of summer rental period that's going on. And in particular, I note from two weekends ago that the fishing, the boat launching that takes place off of Lewis Bay Road in the town of Barnstable, that then requires there's no parking there, that they have to go park elsewhere, means they then come and park in Hyannis Park. And during that week, it was a nightmare. You have a vehicle that I've seen repeatedly over the years, who he parks about a foot off of the telephone pole, three feet from a fire hydrant, and if anything were ever to happen on Willow Street in that area, I don't know how the fire department would be able to use their equipment. In addition, these trailers sit half-parked out onto the streets, they're narrow enough down there as it is. It's a particular problem on Willow, on Bayview, at Bayview Beach, and on Somerset. When you go to try to come around the corner, I almost was hit head-on by somebody who was avoiding two trailers parked, boats with trailers parked on them as you went to go around the corner, excuse me, to come in. This has gone on repeatedly over the last few years, and it's gotten worse. I think they think, because it's a free-for-all. What's now resulted, and it's really, really tragic, I've talked to some of the neighbors on Bayview, they've gotten to the point where they're so worried about even being able to get out of their own driveways on Bayview, that there are now three different houses, and I took pictures of them, that went out and had the cost of printing their own no-parking signs, private property, no-trailer signs, down on Bayview in order to try to take care of the problem themselves. In addition, I think there needs to be some real clarification about overnight parking on our streets, and particularly when you get down into some of these smaller streets that are very popular to rent, down by the water, down by the beaches, and what happens there. I've had the situation where there've been repeated parking on Highland, that I almost got hit the other day, because Park comes into Highland, and someone was coming on Highland to go make the left-hand turn onto Park, had swung out around the two cars that were parked there, so that they were then into, almost hitting me head-on as I was sitting on Park, waiting to make the right-hand turn onto Highland. I don't know how we address this, I think there's going to be, need to be signage, I think there needs to be effective police enforcement there, because they're dodging the cost of parking, the fees that Barnstable charges them to park their boats with trailers. But in addition, given the nightmare that we're seeing down there already, and I know what it's going to look like the rest of the summer, is there some way that notices for people who are getting permits for renting their properties or whatever, have to give to the tenants about the fact there's no on-street parking? Because, I mean, I'll find eight cars parked at a house that has three bedrooms, you know, overnight down in our neighborhood, and it's really getting quite out of control. And, you know, we're still talking about sewage and protecting Lewis Bay and everything else, I mean, you've got runoff on asphalt from all these cars and things like that, and I just, it's gotten to be a real safety problem. It's also gotten to be a thing where certainly these boat trailers, and they're always on big pickup trucks of some sort, are into our roadways. It needs to be dealt with. And so I just would like to see some enforcement by either signage from the DPW, enforcement by the police, let's start tagging, and I don't know if you told them, but tag them big time for big fines, and let's start getting effective about this. And then something has to be done about the overnight parking of cars in residential neighbors, just because somebody's hoping to make a few bucks renting a house to a lot of people with a lot of cars. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else? Tom?
Yes, good evening, and thank you, Tom Nicanella, from the very historic village of Bass River. Thank you very much for all you folks do, our administration and the Board of Selectmen. As you know, about 10 days ago, we had a record number setting of people that came out and helped us clean our community. We did an exceptional job picking up over maybe two and a half tons of trash. We ran out of materials, unfortunately, with some pickers and some vests and stuff, because we didn't really plan on so much attendance. But I think everyone today with, you know, Earth Day is April 22nd, but to me, Earth Day is every day, right? So those people came out and made a difference in our community. I did over by the old water tower behind the pancake man, and I did the back part and the side part, and by the time I did that, my bag was full, and that was disappointing. However, along the front of 28 was this great young couple, boyfriend and girlfriend, and they were bending down, picking up stuff, and I said to them, I said, "Well, my bag is full, and my time is gone, so I'm going to give you my picker," and you, you know, encourage on, because they were really getting into it, and it was great. So it was a good venue. It's been happening for a long time in our community. I just wish people would treat Earth Day as every day. And then on another historic note, as you know, seven days ago, we all came together at our town meeting, and once again, our town meeting is probably the best form of democracy we have in our little community, when everybody comes out and we're all connected. There was a record attendance, and at 7:15, the article 18 came up, and at 8:17, all the pin cards went up, and actually, we were more connected then than ever before. And we're going to be more connected in the future as ever before because of that one moment. So in 16 short years from now, we'll be celebrating our 400th anniversary here in town. We missed out on the 20th, 400, 2020, 400, 400 years in Plymouth because of the pandemic, but our community, hopefully, 16 years later, will be nitrogen-free, hopefully. We're going to have some banners on Old King's Highway to celebrate our wonderful event 400 years later, and we're going to be in better shape. Our commercial part of our town will be stronger, they'll be more vibrant, we'll have some good tax relief for our residents, because our commercial base will be picked up. We're as low as you can go right now. We can't get any lower on the commercial tax rate. As the Assistant Town Administrator, which is not here tonight, did a wonderful job explaining where we used to be and where we are now, and how the balance is so offset. Well, this is a new beginning in our town, and hopefully, we can make that curve and actually help the residents by increasing our commercial tax base. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else? Is there anybody on the screen?
No hands up.
No? Okay.
On schedule so far.
The next item is a vote delegating the Chief of Police Authority to detail sufficient police officers for the annual town election. In my understanding, the town clerk is not going to be present?
That's correct. Unfortunately, she did send me a note late this afternoon indicating that she couldn't be here, but she did fully brief me on this effort, which is the same as it was done last year, and it's a response to the Voting Act of 2022. It really tasks the Board of Selectmen with ensuring the appropriate amount of police officers at each polling place, and what this action does is delegates to the Chief of Police in consultation with the town clerk to make sure that those details are properly assigned, and that way we're compliant with the law.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion.
There's a simple motion, I think, in the packet. Mark, do you want to make that motion?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Selectmen hereby delegates its authority, given under Chapter 92, Section 72 of the Acts of 2022, to detail a sufficient number of police officers or constables for each building that contains the polling places for one or more precincts at every election therein, to preserve order and to protect the election officers and supervisors from interference with their duties into aid in enforcing the laws relating to the election, to elections, to the Chief of Police in consultation with the town clerk.
Second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Okay, the next item is a hearing for a new alcohol license for the Free Bird Motor Lodge at 553 Route 28 in West Yarmouth. Is the folks present for that? Okay, good. Everybody ready to go? Just give me one second to get the right paperwork here.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Why don't you introduce yourselves for the record, please?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Attorney Dan Chamberlain. I'm with the Chamberlain Law Group here in Yarmouth, and I represent Shrim Inc., DBA Free Bird Motor Lodge. Here with me on behalf of the applicant is Parth Patel and his brother, Pervish.
Hi, guys.
Thank you. I'll go to the public notice, and then you can proceed.
Thank you.
The Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority for the town of Yarmouth, has received an application for a new annual all-alcohol hotel license from Shrim Inc., doing business as Free Bird Motor Lodge, 553 Route 28, West Yarmouth, Mass., Parth Patel, Parth Patel manager. The premises are two-story, 69,180-square-foot motel with 74 guest rooms, an office, pool, an outdoor restaurant with seating for 35. The hearing will be held on Tuesday, May 2, 2023, at Town Hall, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. The Selectmen's meeting begins at 6 PM. Written comments will be accepted until 4:30 PM Friday, April 28, 2023, in the Selectmen's office at Town Hall, or it can be submitted electronically to publiccomment@yarmouthMA.us. Verbal comments will be accepted at the hearing. Okay, Attorney Chamberlain?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Shrim Inc. is a family business. It has owned and operated numerous hotels and motels, including a Section 15 package store. It has owned and operated what was formerly known as Hunter's Green Motel since 2013. The proposed operation is a food truck, food truck restaurant, serving appetizers and flatbread pizzas. They propose to serve alcohol, beer, and wine out of the food truck. There are 35 seats associated with that food truck operation. There is a food permit under review, and which would, if granted, would, that would be at the time of the completion. The property is under significant renovation, and I think the town will benefit from that renovation. It looks pretty good so far. There is a, in the office, proposed single-serve beer and wine in a small fridge. The policies of the premises will be one drink per person. All servers will be tip-certified. The pool will be closed off at 10 PM, which is their normal posted hours, and it can be fenced off. There will be no entertainment on the premises. The proposed manager, he's an experienced individual, has run multiple hotels, and including that Section 5, Section 15 convenience store alcohol establishment. He is college-educated, tip-certified, and I think is a, will do a fine job in managing this premises. I hope that the board can approve this, and if you have any questions, I can take them at this time.
Thank you very much. Does anybody in the public want to be heard on this matter? Either for or against? Seeing none. Did we get any emails or correspondence on this? There was one, wasn't there?
Yeah, it's just one.
Okay, I think I have it here. Gomitar Ivanov. Don't see an address here. Says, "Dear Selectmen, I'm a resident of West Yarmouth, owning a home not far from Free Bird, Free Bird Motor Lodge. My only concern is with the noise levels. I hope the future restaurant won't play loud music with loud bass. We don't want to have the same problems like this from two years ago with the nearby music room. Please take into consideration that the music and noise levels should stay very low application." You're not applying for any entertainment licenses, are you?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Not at this point in time, at least. So this comment's really irrelevant?
I think the intent is, you want to keep the abutters happy by keeping noise down to a minimum. If noise is not a problem, there might be something in the future, but that is not part of our application at this time.
Let's, before we go to the board, let's take a look at input from other town departments. You did mention the Board of Health. Okay, the building, what's this one? Yeah, the health department. There's 74 units, 74 bedrooms, food truck must be licensed and inspected by the health department prior to using, and that is dated March 24, so you're going to have to deal with the health department on that. And then, building department says use is okay, requires licensing from health, structure requires accessory, accessory building slash shed permit. That's the input from building. And I think that's pretty much it, as far as I can see in this packet. Let's go to the board to see if they have any questions. Mark?
I don't have any questions.
Dan?
I'm just confused. You mentioned beer and wine, but you're asking for an all-alcohol permit.
That is correct. Beer and wine will be limited at the front desk, the office. They will be able to sell beer and wine, or looking to sell beer and wine out of a small fridge there. No mixed drinks in the office. The mixed drinks will be limited to the restaurant portion of the property.
So the person that's manning the desk?
Also tip-certified.
Okay.
The same policies apply, one drink per person.
I'm curious, so you're going to have service of alcohol out by the pool?
The, no, that'll be limited to the restaurant area. It's in the area adjacent to the pool, and the pool is fenced off from, from that restaurant.
So there won't be any people with alcoholic drinks going into the pool area?
The hope would, that they could, if they, they could purchase it and then walk through a gate to sit with their chair, not consuming alcohol in the pool.
No. Okay. It's difficult to see on the maps that you've provided. Where's the food truck going to go?
If you, so if you look at the map, it'll be on the, which I believe is the, would be the west, west side, between the hotel and the pool area, so from the road, it'll be to the right.
To the right, okay. I just, I took a drive-by this afternoon. Boy, you guys are right on top of some of that residences behind you there. You already said it, you're going to be very sensitive to the sound issues. That's our major concern at this point, and obviously, when you're dealing with alcohol, safety near the pool area. But otherwise, we're excited to have you in town, and thank you for renovating an old property and boosting up 28 for us a little bit, and we're excited to have you here.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Torgus?
Are you going to be doing advertising out front, that you have a restaurant and bar available onsite?
That is not the, no. No advertising out front about the bar.
Okay. So you're really looking at this primarily for your guests that are staying at the hotel?
That is correct. Thank you.
I'm kind of confused. So you're going to serve alcohol from the food truck? Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. And in a minute, I'm going to ask you to come up here and label the food truck for me.
Absolutely.
Now, the front desk, how, where's that alcohol going to be stored? Is there going to be like a cooler there? Or how's that going to work?
It's going to be a cooler behind the front desk, so only accessible by the person operating the front desk.
And where can that, where is that person limited to consuming the beverages that are served from the front desk? Can they walk anywhere with it? Or is there an area where they're going to drink it there, or what?
So they can consume it in the office or, or pool area, and are they able to take it to their rooms? No. No. So not, not able to take it to their rooms. So limited to that.
So they either drink it in the office or bring it to the pool area?
Correct.
Okay.
Or there's a seating area in front of the food.
And they can only buy one drink from the?
Correct.
How's that going to be monitored?
Well, there's only, because you only have two points of sale, the, and you'll have an op, you'll be able to have an operator at each location, they'll be tip-certified, so they'll, it's a relatively small area, so.
Well, I obviously haven't seen it. So now there's a third area where they'll be drinking alcoholic beverages near the pool? Is there any other serving area other than the two we just mentioned?
No.
No? So would you do me a favor and mark where this food truck's going to be, and where that front desk is going to be? You can just write "food truck" or "front desk." What color is your pen? Is that?
You're working off the.
Here's a blue pen.
The other ones?
Yes, here's the site. This is, this will be a better overview.
Okay, wait a minute, is this, where's mine?
One back, Mike.
One back?
Right here.
No.
All right, go ahead on this, so I can keep it.
So this is the food truck.
So where's the front desk?
Front desk is right here. There's a small, an access, a couple walks from here. There's the pool.
Where's the pool?
Pool is this, out right here.
Anybody pulling there? Okay. Okay, so they're going to, there's a walkthrough area where they can get a drink at the front desk and walk down to the pool if they don't consume it at the front desk?
Correct.
Is that the? Is that the game plan?
Can you, can you say that one more time? I, I just make sure I heard you right.
So there's not gonna be any alcohol service near the pool, but somebody could get a drink at the front desk and walk down that path you've shown me to the pool area to consume it?
Yes.
Is this food truck gonna be permanently on the premise all the time?
Yes.
All right, and it must be a pretty big truck. It's, was it seat, what'd you say, thirty-five people?
There's a seating, uh, a, area in front of the truck outside, and then, uh, there's a few seats, uh, up against, uh, the truck itself. Uh, the truck, I believe, is fourteen by... Eight by fourteen.
Will this food truck be in the same location all the time? Because as you know, your license...
Correct.
Is gonna be limited to certain defined premises. That's why I'm asking you whether the truck's gonna be in the same place.
The truck won't move. It's actually in, in, it's, 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 it's more of a stationary trailer-type truck. Um, it's, 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 the applicant's attempt to add a food component, um, while the searing issue is, is happening.
It's more of an ambiance for the hotel. It's a tra-
Say it again, please.
It's more of an ambiance for the hotel rather than a structure. We just have a trailer. We even take the hinge off, everything is off. It's just gonna stay there all the time.
Okay. Because the thing that we want to be sure of when we describe the licensed premises, that they're not, it's not a shifting or mobile...
No, once we put it in, it's not moving till it gets demoed.
It's gonna be de- defined to one area?
Correct, and there really aren't, there, there really are no options to move it elsewhere on the property.
Okay, it's pretty much gonna be stable?
Yeah.
All right, you've answered my questions. Does anybody have anything else? Would somebody like to make a motion?
A motion to close the public hearing.
All right, we have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing. We have a second. All who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Public hearing is closed.
Motion to approve the petition.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all who's in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? So that passes unanimously. Thank you for your, um, presentation and your clarifications, and I see that you gave the green cards to our licensing clerk when you came in.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, appreciate it.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is weekday and Sunday entertainment license for Thatcher Hall, two sixty-six, Route six A in Yarmouth Port. Good evening.
Good evening.
You wanna introduce yourself for the record, sir?
Yes, my name is Les Pete. I'm the treasurer of the Yarmouth New Church Preservation Foundation, which owns Thatcher Hall, which are the premises where, for which we're applying for the license.
Thank you. I'll read the legal notice into the record, and then you can tell us what you want to tell us about this application. "The Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority for the town of Yarmouth, has received an application for an updated new annual weekday and Sunday entertainment license from the Yarmouth New Church Preservation Foundation, due in business to Thatcher Hall, two sixty-six, Route six A, Yarmouth Port, Mass., in zip code W. Leslie Pete Manager. Weekday and Sunday entertainment include theater, movies, live bands, including orchestras, instrumental vocal concerts, and an amplification system up to sixty decibels. Weekday entertainment hours will be Monday to Saturday from five PM to nine PM. Sunday entertainment, um, will be from one PM to nine PM." Excuse me, "The hearing will be held Tuesday, May second, twenty-twenty-three, at Town Hall, eleven forty-six through twenty-eight, South Yarmouth, Mass. The Selectmen's meeting begins at six PM. Written comments will be accepted until four-thirty Friday, April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three, in the Selectmen's office at Town Hall, or can be submitted electronically to publiccomment@yarmouth MA US. Verbal comments will be accepted at the hearing." Now, before you get into your, um, presentation, do I understand that the license that you're seeking now will replace the one you have? This new license?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanna clarify that. Go ahead.
Well, this is, is a kind of replay of, of a hearing that we had a month ago, uh, where we had submitted an application. The application was submitted by an employee of the foundation that's no longer working for us. And I had nev- never actually seen the original application before the hearing. I've seen it now, and she checked every box on the hearing, on the application, as being something that we were applying for. That certainly wasn't our intent. There were a, a number of things on it that raised questions about whether we were a nightclub, and it's a former church, it's not in any way a nightclub, and we didn't, as it turns out, we didn't meet the, any of the requirements that would have made us be classified that way. But, um, because, uh, we had to redo the application, it was, it was felt that we should have another hearing. But basically, we're, we're applying for a good deal less than what we applied for the last time.
So the, the-
Basically doing about what we've been doing for the last twenty-five years.
Okay. Yeah, just, just for your own edification, the classification of a nightclub isn't what you would think it is. There's certain criteria, and if so many of them apply, you know, depending on music, um, the occupancy load of, of the premises, et cetera, the building inspector then makes a determination of whether it's a nightclub. For example, there are events that go on at the senior center, which you wouldn't think is a nightclub, right? But those particular events are classified as a nightclub based on the activity level, so we understand the difference between a conventional nightclub and a church, but that's really not the test. The test is whether or not these different criteria apply, yeah.
With the criteria, we met none of them.
Okay. You're, you're, you're trying to do this license so that you don't have to run the problem of being classified as a nightclub and triggering those requirements, basically, right?
Well, we don't do any of those things. I mean, that, for example, it, one of the things was whether you had a dance floor, but we...
Right, that's another criteria, yes.
We don't have it, we don't have a dance floor.
Yeah, yeah.
And we, we don't have any of the, uh, any of the, of the things that would have led us to be classified that way.
We have input here from the building department, and let me read it to you, 'cause I think it pretty much, um, is dispositive of what you and I are talking about here. Says, "While the use is considered an assembly occupancy with a high occupant load density, the use does not qualify as a nightclub per seven-eighty CMR, as the single additional qualifier is nighttime operation. Should the events change, the building department should be notified immediately."
Fair enough.
And, and the building department is the one, just so you know, that classifies whatever your use fits as a nightclub or some other activity. It's not, it's not the Board of Selectmen, it's... It's the building department. Okay. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to be heard on this? Did we get any input? None. Okay, I'll see if the Board of Selectmen has any questions or comments. Mark?
No.
Dan?
No questions.
Dorcas?
Just to say that it's, um, a tremendous, uh, asset, I think, to the community that we have, Thatcher Hall or the New Church, um, and that the interior, to me, is just stunning, and it's too bad that not too many people ever get to see it. My only comment. No questions.
Okay, um, do I have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The only thing I'm gonna say to you before we vote is to keep in mind the building inspector's comment, so that if you do decide to, um, deviate from your current use, that you check with him first to see whether or not that's gonna trigger any other classification that you might have to comply with. I would do that in advance of making that change. I would check with him and say, "If I do make this change, how, you know, is this gonna put me in a nightclub situation" or whatever? And then if he says yes, you might say, "Well, we, we don't want to go there, because we don't want to comply with all those regulations," that would kick in.
We, we have no intention of changing our operations at this point, and if we did, of course, we would talk to the building department about it.
Okay, I just don't want to see you get backed in anything and have to come back a third time. All right, so do we have a, a, a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all who's in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? It carries unanimously, sir. Thank you very much for coming in. Okay. The next licensing matter is a special alcohol slash entertainment license for Cape Cod Pirates Festival at the Yarmouth Drive-In Site in West Yarmouth. Good evening.
Good evening. Good to be back before you folks.
Do you want to introduce yourself for the record, please?
Certainly. Uh, Christopher Schultz, um, the owner of New Latitude Event Solutions, the company that produces the Cape Cod Pirate Festival.
Okay. I'm gonna read the notice into the record as I have in the previous hearings, and then you can proceed, Chris. "The Yarmouth Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority, has received an application from Christopher Schultz for a special one-day all-alcohol license and a one-day special entertainment license for Cape Cod Pirate Festival at the Yarmouth Drive-In Site, six-six-nine, Route twenty-eight, West Yarmouth, Mass., on Saturday, June third, twenty-twenty-three, Sunday, June fourth, twenty-twenty-three, Saturday, June tenth, twenty-twenty-three, and Sunday, June eleventh, twenty-twenty-three. The hours of alcohol service will be from ten-thirty AM to five-thirty PM. The entertainment hours for June third, fourth, and tenth will be ten-thirty AM to five-thirty PM. The entertainment hours for June eleventh will be ten-thirty AM to six-thirty PM. Entertainment will include an exhibition, dancing by entertainers and performers, live music, concert, amplification system, theatrical exhibition, and stage play. The hearing will be held Tuesday, May second, twenty-twenty-two, at Town Hall, eleven forty-six through twenty-eight, South Yarmouth. The Selectmen's meeting begins at six PM. Written comments will be accepted until four-thirty PM Friday, April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three, at the licensing office at Town Hall, or can be submitted electronically to publiccomment@yarmouth MA US. Verbal comments will be accepted at the hearing." So why don't you tell us a little bit about what it is that you have planned for these dates?
Certainly. So, uh, first off, I want to thank, uh, the Select Board for all of its support in the past couple of years. This is our third year for this event, which we're very excited about. The growth from the first year to the second year in attendance to our, at our event was a hundred and fifty percent, uh, based on, uh, the people who were able to come to our one-weekend event who came to our second event. Uh, we anticipate similar growth this year as well. Uh, one of the benefits of having this festival, uh, one of the reasons why I really like being able to do this here in Yarmouth is it draws people into town who then come and spend money in town. They go to the restaurants around here, they fill up on gas, uh, they get hotel nights. We had several families who, uh, stayed and came multiple days to the event. So, in my opinion, I think it's a great benefit for the town, and I'm excited to be able to do this here. The event itself is a themed event. Um, it gives people an excuse to kind of find their inner pirate. They get to get dressed up, walk around, have some fun, yar a little bit, um, have a few beers, play and, and watch some shows, sing some sea shanties, uh, and in addition to that, we have some fun games. We have rides for the kids, uh, all of which have a pirate theme to them. Uh, it really is just a wonderful opportunity for families to come out and enjoy themselves and really, uh, immerse themselves in the magic of, of the fantasy of piracy and being a pirate, um, while at the same time being able to partake in what the town here has to offer as well.
Okay, great, thanks. Does anybody in the, um, audience want to be heard in this matter? Yes, I see somebody from the historic village of Bass River approaching the microphone.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Tom McEnell here from the very historic village of Bass River and extremely historic town, Mr. Chairman. Um, getting to the subject, Mr. Schultz has done an outstanding job in the last three years, providing great ente- entertainment for our residents, our guests, our families. Uh, we just wish him, uh, the best of luck this year, his fourth year, and, uh, hopefully he'll be with us for many years to come. We have some exciting things for, for event people, uh, to come and show off their talents here in our community. And, uh, one of the last thing, and as always, uh, the most concern is, hope you have good weather.
Thank you. We didn't get any public feedback on this, Dakota. Um, there are a couple of comments I just want to make you aware of, if you're not already aware of them, from the fire department, um, dated March twenty-first. It says tents over a hundred and twenty square feet used for entertainment may, may need to meet the requirements of Mass. General Laws, Chapter one forty-eight, Section twenty-six G and a half, requiring a special permit from the fire department. Fire department has concerns with the full staff of the event sleeping in tents and other structures overnight, as we discovered last year. Any open fires must follow fire department regulations. Fire extinguishers required per NFPA-ten. Fire department access in the past was allowed around the whole event. I do not see that specified on this year's map. Any cannon or black powder events require an additional permit from the fire department. So whatever we do here is separate and apart from the requirements of the fire department. You're gonna have to deal with them on those issues. Um, the building department's comment says it's an allowed use, um, and it says, "Camping prohibited per Section four oh one point one point one zoning bylaw." And it's, the bylaw, it says, quote, "At no time shall parked or stored camping or, and recreational equipment be occupied, or stored camping and recreational equipment be used for living, sleeping, or housekeeping purposes," that's dated, um, March twenty-second. So you're gonna have to comply with the requirements of the building department on that. Again, that's independent from this board's jurisdiction. Um, and the health department's comments are, "All food trucks must be licensed by the health department at least one month prior to the event." So if they're not licensed, you're running thin on time, you better get to the health department. And that comment is dated March twenty-fourth by the health inspector. Um, and that's all the other input from town boards. I'll go to the Board of Selectmen at this point. Selectmen Forrest?
I have no questions.
Selectman Horgan?
No questions. We're just very grateful that you're, uh, part of our community now, and, uh, it's a wonderful draw, and it's early in the season. Uh, it's a win-win for Yarmouth, and we're very, very pleased. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Selectman McGurran?
I have no questions, and just to second what, um, Selectman Horgan has said. It's just great to have an event like this. I'll just have to start practicing my "Arrgh!" to get ready.
It doesn't sound like you need any practice. Um, okay, so everybody loves pirates, right? It's kind of like everybody loves Raymond, but everybody loves pirates. Um, and I think that's true. So you gonna have Johnny Depp down there?
No, I, I'm a stand-in for the event.
Okay.
I just have to suck my gun in a little bit, I'll be fine.
Do we have a motion to close the public hear- Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So the public hearing is closed. Do we have a motion on the application?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to grant the application as presented. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you and good luck.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it.
One more licensing matter before we turn this to the main feature. County, various county presentations. This one is a number of different applications. Annual weekday and Sunday entertainment amendment and a special entertainment extension for a grand opening of the patio at Sea Dog Brew Pub 23V, as in Victor White's Path in South Yarmouth. Good evening. I'm going to have you gentlemen identify yourselves for the record, then I will read the legal notice, and then you can proceed.
My name is Matthew Berry. I'm the manager of the Sea Dog Brew Pub.
P.O. Sea Dog, manager, and owner.
Okay. The Yarmouth Board of Selectmen acting as a local licensing authority has received an application from Sea Dog Brew Pub Cape Cod LLC, doing business as Sea Dog Brew Pub. Matthew Berry, manager, 23V, White's Path, South Yarmouth, for an amendment to their current weekday and Sunday entertainment licenses. The amendment is to extend the current entertainment licenses to allow entertainment on the outdoor patio. Proposed outdoor entertainment hours are Fridays, 8 p.m. to 12 a.m., and Saturdays, 1 p.m. to 12 a.m., and Sunday from 1 p.m. to 8 p.m. The proposed outdoor entertainment is to include one to two performers with a small amplifier or perform acoustically. The hearing will be held on Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023, in the hearing room at the Town Hall, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth. The board of selectmen's meeting begins at 6 p.m. Written comments will be accepted until 4:30 p.m. Friday, April 28th, 2023, in the selectmen's office at Town Hall, or can be submitted electronically to publiccomment@yarmouth MA US. Verbal comments will be accepted at the hearing. So there's a number of licensing matters here. Why don't we break them down to make it easier to follow, if you don't mind doing it that way? Let's start with the grand opening one. Trying to find that one. What's the date on that, 2009? Let me see. Do we have different packets on this hearing?
Mm-hmm.
There's two of them.
Okay, that's why I can't find it. All right, sorry. Here, I got it, Dorcas. Yeah. All right, so let's talk first about the patio grand opening. The date of the event is May 28th. Matt Berry's going to be in charge of it. There's going to be a live band with five pieces. There'll be dancing by patrons, which we'll talk about in a minute, recorded music, live music, amplification system. 1 p.m. to sunset. Now, we got to talk about sunset for a minute. So that's a, that's a pretty elusive standard. Somebody comes by, sees something happening. Well, sun hasn't set yet. Well, yeah, it has. Does it set here, but it's not set in Hawaii? So anyway, I looked up sunset, and sun's going to set that day at 8:06. So I'm going to construe that application to mean until 8 o'clock.
Perfect.
Or if you want to press it 8:06, but not sunset. Okay? So let's talk about that one. What do you want to say that is not in here? Anything?
Sure. Yeah, so to celebrate the construction of our new patio at the restaurant, we are going to have an event on that day. We're already in touch with the Yarmouth Chamber of Commerce and the Cape Cod Cultural Center, and we're going to have a joint sponsorship event. We're going to do a little wing contest to try to make up for the one that the chamber couldn't have this year because they couldn't get enough participation. And then the cultural center will join us for some sponsorship. So it's going to be a pretty big event, and we have lots of plans for lots of events like that for the whole town, for the summer and beyond. And we'd like permission to have a live band play that day as well.
Okay. I'm just trying to save some time here. I'm going to go to the board and do course, but where's the dancing going to occur? It says dancing by patrons. If I read your application correctly, that's one of the things on the applica- are you going to have dancing by patrons? And if so, where's that going to occur?
If they want to dance like at their table. So if they stand up and dance. It's like, we don't have a dance floor.
I know what dancing is. I'm not, I'm worried about where.
We don't have a dance floor. So I mean, we're still going to have tables and chairs out there and the band. So there won't be a dance floor per se.
Okay. Dancing in place, that type of thing?
Basically, yes.
All right. Okay, so that's the grand opening one. And then for the outdoor, right?
Yes.
Now, sticking with the outdoor area as opposed to the other special event, you're looking to allow entertainment on the outdoor patio Fridays from 8 to midnight, and Saturday from 1 p.m. to midnight, and Sunday from 1 to 8. And the entertainment's going to be limited to one or two performers with a small amplifier or perform acoustically. So what do you want to say about that part of your application?
In general, we would like to extend our entertainment license to include the outdoor patio. We feel it would be a great draw for people, especially in the summertime weekends, ideally on Sunday afternoons, but we'd like to keep it open for Saturday afternoons or even a Friday night. And as opposed to the patio grand opening party where we'd like to have a full-piece live band, the general amendment would be for just one or two performers performing solo or a duet with lower sound level, just enough to, you know, be heard over the, you know, stop-and-stop parking lot and the road next to it.
So when you suggest the general course of things would be one or two, that's really not how it works. If you apply for one or two, that's it. You get one or two. It can't be occasionally three or maybe four.
Correct.
I just want to be clear so we don't have issues, okay?
Yes, 100%.
Because that's what your app's asking for, right? One, one to two.
Yes.
What about the hours? 12 seems kind of late. Why would you want to perform outdoor entertainment that late? Are you going to be serving out there that late?
Likely not, although we can. Our license does allow it, and we were, basically, we just took the terms that we had on our indoor entertainment license and wanted to extend them to the outdoor entertainment license, just to cover it. But if we needed to change them just because it's outside, we understand.
Well, I'm going to suggest to you, though, that there is a difference between indoor and outdoor entertainment, obviously, and that's the noise level. So I just want you to think about that. I don't want to impose anything because it's not my place to do that. It's just to raise issues, and then we're going to hear from everybody and decide what we're going to do on that. So but right now, that's based on the indoor entertainment. That's what you did. You basically lifted that and wanted to make it universal and include the outdoor. Okay, I got that. All right. Anything else you want to say on that part of it? That part of the application? No, we covered everything there, all right. So let me see now here. So what I'm looking for now is the extension under Big Nick's event?
We're not doing that this evening.
Yep, that's coming in for a hearing in June.
That's not coming in now? That's going to be a June hearing?
Right. It looks like the health department consolidated all of their comments for even the ones that weren't on for tonight.
That's for June? So do we have anything else for tonight? Other than these, the ones we've talked about? All right. Is there anybody in the public that wants to be heard on this? Tom Nicconello, I see, approaching the microphone from the historic village of Bass River.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much, Tom Nicconello. As you can see, I'm wearing my Chamber of Commerce uniform tonight. It's being a board member for many years and a second generation. Our Chamber of Commerce is extremely important here in our community, as you know. And Sea Dogs Brew Pub, otherwise known as SDVP, has been our, in our community for many years now, and has taken the plunge of outdoor seating. The pandemic has brought outdoor seating to our community like it has over across the pond. And it's very nice for our guests and our residents to sit outside in July and August and enjoy the beautiful weather we provide here with no mosquitoes. It's just absolutely wonderful. So we encourage and would like to invite everyone to the open house on May 28th at SDVP. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else? Do we get, we didn't get any electronic responses or anything like that? Okay. So I'm going to go to the board now and see if they have any questions or comments. Mark?
I have no comments.
Dan?
Nothing, thank you.
Dorcas?
No comments.
Okay. The only thing I would ask my fellow board members is how they feel about the hours on the outdoor entertainment from 8 p.m. to 12 a.m. on Saturday and Sunday. To me, that, that's, I mean, 12 will usually get you 12:30 or 1 by the time people clear out of there. It seems kind of late, but I want to know what the board feels about that.
I was looking at the data sheets that you've given us for the restaurants for weekday and Sundays, but unfortunately, we don't break out outdoor entertainment.
No.
And that might be helpful in the future, just so that we can stay consistent in terms of-
There should be outdoor service on the-
You think there is?
Yeah.
There's not a lot of them.
There's not many.
Okay.
But there is checkboxes if they have it, and then it describes it on the next column.
All right. When I first saw this, I, my eyebrow raised also at the time, but I also know the area, and there's not a lot of residences in that area. So I'm not troubled by the 12 a.m., but I'm certainly amenable to mending it down if that's the consensus of the board.
Mark, what do you think about Yarmouth?
I agree with Selectman Horgan. I think we need to apply some consistency, but if we look at this particular area, there are really not that many homes or residences in the area. So that's probably the one area in town where we could, one could sort of push the limit, so to speak. I have no issues with respect to the one-day extension. I think that's fine. And specifying this, the 8 o'clock time period. But on the, this other application, going to 12, Saturday 12 a.m. and Friday 12, 12 a.m., I think that's really pushing it. I'd be comfortable if the sense of the board was to scale that back maybe to 11.
Dorcas?
Well, given the location, it is kind of unique. We don't really have any residences that are nearby. So personally, on this one, I don't see any issue with changing the hours.
There aren't many, but there are some. There are some residences right at that bend on White's Path. There definitely are. And I don't know if the criteria is, if it's only bothersome to one or two people, it's okay. I mean, I'm not so sure we want to... What do you think, what can you guys live with? What's reasonable?
I think 11 is okay with us, too.
11 is fine, yeah.
Okay. Just fish it a little bit with the 12, huh?
Well, the bands in general, even inside, we don't go that late.
Yeah, how long do you normally go inside? 10, 11?
10, 11, 11 o'clock.
I mean, these guys, you got to pay them too, right? You don't want them there forever.
No. We want everybody out there anyway.
Especially when everybody's leaving, when a lot of people are leaving. You want to optimize their performance time, right? So, okay. Do we, should we act, I think we should act any separately. Okay, first of all, let's look at, I'm going to close the public hearing momentarily, but let's look at the special license. If I can find my papers.
The grand opening?
Yes. That was May 28th, right? So on that particular matter, let's get a motion to close the public hearing on that.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now, do we have a-
I'll put a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
I move that we approve the application for a one-day extension for May 28th. As presented, however, with, with a, in the application, it mentions sunset. I would change that to 8 p.m.
Okay, great.
Second on that.
There will be a motion in a second. Can I ask you a question? And it might be just typographical. I mean, it says here, which says live band with, and it looks like five pieces, and there's a, I don't know if there was something like scratched out before that. Do you see what I'm talking about?
Well, that's the less than.
Huh?
The less than sign. It's a mathematical symbol. It means less than five.
Is that what that's supposed to be? Well, how come we have that little hook on the end? All right, so it's less than five? Is that what it means?
Yes.
All right. And then, just to clarify that.
I got that.
And then in the back, it says 3-4. So what, are you looking for up to four pieces?
The band that we ideally want to have is a four-piece band.
Four pieces? So can we make, can we be understood that the motion is up to four pieces?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody good with that?
That's acceptable.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second on the floor, right? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So that passes unanimously. And then what I would like to do is get a motion on the extension of entertainment to the outdoor patio on Fridays and Saturdays from 8 to 11 p.m. and on Sunday from 1 to 8 p.m.
Mr. Chairman, do we have to close a public hearing on that one?
Yes, we do, and you're making a motion to do that.
Yes, I am.
And I'm going to second it. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, so what I'd like to do is get a motion that we approve the application for, to extend entertainment to the outdoor patio area on Fridays from 8 p.m. to 11 p.m., Saturday 1 p.m. to-
Sunday.
No, Saturday would also be 8 p.m. to-
8 p.m. to-
To 11.
11 p.m., and Sunday from 1 p.m. to 8 p.m.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Is any further discussion?
Just one comment. I did find that section to quote. And just so everybody's aware, at least what I'm seeing is that all the licenses go from 8 to 10. I haven't seen anything as late as 11. So just so you're aware, this is a very unique site. And there's very few, if any, houses that will be impacted by two people outside.
On acoustics.
But I wanted you to at least be aware of that.
No, I would... I would agree with you. And I mean, if we have problems with entertainment licenses, always... Not always, but more often than not, it's outdoors. And it's with amplification. And some of those are just ongoing...
Right.
Battles between the business and the neighborhood. But I get... I... I'm very familiar with the neighborhood, and I do agree that it's... Departed from the norm in that it's in a commercial area, basically, an industrial area. And if it was in a more dense residential neighborhood, I think you're correct, Dan, that we probably would want to scale it back even more because of our past experiences. But is everybody comfortable, given the location, to leave it at those hours? Okay. All right. So we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? So that passes unanimously. Thank you for coming in, gentlemen.
Thank you, everybody. See you next month.
Thank you.
Yeah. I was surprised. I thought we were going to do all that tonight. No? Okay. All right. We're prepared now to proceed to some matters that concern the county government. And the first item on the agenda is Susan Warner, Yarmouth delegate to the Assembly of Delegates.
Good evening, Susan.
Come on up to the front.
Thank you, and thank you for this opportunity. Chairman Stone and select persons McGurran, Horgan, and Forrest.
Susan, at the outset, I just want to say one thing before it escapes my memory, and that is, feel free anytime that you think there's a county issue that may impact or be of special concern to Yarmouth to get in touch with our Town Administrator's Office. Say that you'd like to come in either, depending on the length of time that you have in mind, whether you can be recognized as extended public comment, or you can come in and sit down as you are now at a... You know, if it's scheduled as an agenda item and talk to us. We'd love to have your input, and you are welcome anytime. When Suzanne McAuliffe was the representative, she used to do that. She... Not on any set schedule, but she'd come in from time to time and say, there's this vote in the county, and it's up for consideration. How do you guys feel about it? I got to cast a vote on this. Or there's an item, you know, a few things you should be aware of that are coming up on the agenda that we feel are going to impact Yarmouth. So we want you to know that even though you're here for the first time tonight, we hope to see you again and at your... At your pleasure and on your schedule.
Terrific. Thank you for that invitation. I did also want to take an opportunity to congratulate the select persons for an incredible town meeting and very successful and overwhelming response to the wastewater initiative. I know that that was a very hard-fought battle. And the detail that was put into it to get there was quite extraordinary. So thank you for that, because as a member of the community, I'm very, very pleased. And I bet everybody had a sigh of relief after that vote. As part of my responsibilities on the assembly, I also have several standing committees on which I am involved. And probably the two most active right now are the Finance Committee... Standing Committee on Finance and the... I'm chairperson of the Economic Development Committee. So the Economic Affairs Committee. And that's a new committee that we started this year to look at some areas that perhaps we could help the county with going forward. And there are several others that I'm involved with, but those are probably the ones that take up most of my time at this point. As you probably know, the Assembly is made up of 15 towns, and each of the towns has a weighted vote against... That's built against their population, which means that Yarmouth is the third largest. So as a result, we have about 11% of the vote, just under 11% of the vote. And when it comes to making decisions that are in-between or possibly going to swing one way or the other, Yarmouth's vote is a very critical, critical vote. And there are a number of towns, like Province Town, that are about 1%. And then several larger towns. But they all have awaited... There is always a weighted vote in how the various ordinances or legislative things are pushed through. It is the legislative body of the county, and the commissioners, amongst which your select board person is a member, is actually chair, is the executive branch of the body. And so as such, we're not actively involved necessarily in the day-to-day operations, but ordinances and legislative issues come to us directly. And it's our group that, because of its largeness and because of the subcommittees that we do have, are able to really kind of look at things a little bit more deeply and make sure that as we're moving these things forward, that we've looked at everything. And before we make a recommendation, the Finance Committee makes a recommendation to the Assembly on how we believe the vote should go. The Committee reviews all of this material. Sometimes it comes from other subcommittees. Sometimes it's from professionals who come in and speak to us. Sometimes it's from county representatives who are representing certain areas. And a good example of that, which was a tricky one in the beginning and a tricky one at the end, but ended up being okay, was the police academy that we did with a couple of years... About a year and a half ago. And by taking the time to really look at where some of the breakdown happened, both in on the police side and on the county side, we were able to work with the groups to make the recommendation that it be... That they solicit, perhaps, its umbrella organization to be the state, which is where most of the other police academies were currently falling under. And at that time, they were kind of in the end of the year, and they had a class ready to go. We also learned things at that time by doing the homework, that we learned things that up until that time, I would say that more than 2/3 of those who were participating in the police academies were not Cape Cod police officers, but officers who were allowed from other communities on... In Massachusetts to participate because the number of potential candidates to go through the program had not been filled. So in the end, it turned out fine. And... But it was a long... A long look at some issues that we really, really needed to straighten out on both sides. And I'm pleased to say that I think we did that very well. And so in that way, sometimes the academy... The acts as a kind of a check and balance on issues. Perhaps the biggest thing that we're dealing with right now, which is always the biggest thing that we deal with each year, is the budget, which takes a good deal of our time. The county puts together a budget working with the commissioners, which is always an arduous task. And this year was even a little more difficult because they had to find a little over $1 million to cut out in order to make a balanced budget. And that took them a lot of hard work to get to the point that they wanted, which was a little over 4% increase for the budget for the upcoming year. And then that budget was presented to the Assembly, and the Assembly looked at it. And then, based on the Speaker's recommendation, had several subcommittees take a look at a couple of areas where there were some services that would be affected by the cuts based on the meetings that we had had. And we wanted to have some input from the community and other professionals to see where they weighed in on what might be lost as a result of that. Those subcommittees, of which there were three that met on different issues, made a recommendation to the Finance Committee, and the Finance Committee agreed with their recommendation. And the recommendation was to try to find some area that we could possibly swap monies, not increase the budget by any money at all, but to swap some money so that we could put back some of these services that would have been affected. Among them, a shine... A part-time shine position, which from our senior citizen population was very much concerning because last year, there were quite a number that did not have the opportunity to use our services and were not able to either have services or were referred to services in other communities quite a bit away. And so we were a little concerned about that one. And also, the Children's Cove, the Police Department, and the... And several psychiatrists and people who deal with groups like children and families in situations of abuse. And we're very concerned that the money... Some of the money from where they were going to cut it would be pulled. Not all of it, but just some areas in terms of the training and stuff that happens for the local police and the training for... For persons who are dealing with this kind of group. So as a... And there were some other areas that... I'm trying to remember what they were. Not a lot, but there was $25,000 that was cut from the AmeriCorps program, which would have allowed for one of the buildings to be brought up better up to speed. And since we are housing quite a number of people in those buildings, trying to keep them up to grade is really important. And that has taken a bit of time and effort to do that. And so we were... We were able, through our meetings, to come up with a recommendation that we swap out roughly about $130,000 from one area of the budget, which predominantly came out of the Assembly's budget, and recommend it be used to replace these areas that we would have lost otherwise. And the budget actually itself, and we made a written recommendation to the Commissioners, which gave them a reason for why we... How we came to the conclusion we did, what the amounts were, and what we recommended and why. And that was presented in early April. And we're actually voting tomorrow, I believe, on the final budget, which will have an opportunity for anybody to make any additional amendments and/or considerations at that time. And that budget vote, then, if passed, will go directly to the Commissioners for approval. And if they pass it, then yay, we're done with the budget. And this year, I have to say, it was a very streamlined process. There was a lot of good questions that were asked by different people about, you know, what would be lost if this money was... Is out of your budget? What could be gained if you were able to move some things around? And the departments were very flexible and very honest about how they felt about what would happen as a result. And so from that input, it also helped us look at how we could best supplement and try to get some additional swapping out of dollars so that the things that were most vocally concerning to the... Primarily to the communities would be put back in, recommended as put back in. So that's, as I said, our biggest thing for the year right now. And we'll be moving on to other things after that. Before that, it was the ARPA... The ARPA monies. And probably one of the biggest concerns that we had, and I did have some conversation... Or some email with the Town Administrator on this, was how the $10 million that was earmarked for the towns would be divided up. Under normal circumstances, one would think that it would go by the size of the town and the percentage and the way that it's voted for other things. But in this case, it was really clear to many of us on the Assembly that the small towns would get very little money to do anything. And while we certainly want... We're not trying to do an equitable thing because their size is much smaller than many of the larger towns, we certainly were not trying to punish them for the fact that they were smaller. So after a lot of back and forth and a number of recommended ways to do it, which were never put forth because the Assembly itself was not collectively happy with how would that solve the problem of fair and equitable. And then nearing the end of it, we did get a recommendation on a way to solve it, which saved... Which affected Yarmouth by, I think, a couple of hundred thousand dollars instead of over almost, I think, a million that would have been lost otherwise, the way the other... The original... Some of the original proposals were for how the money should be divided. So in the end, everybody was somewhat satisfied with the way it resulted, and the small towns were able to actually do some things that benefited them as a result. So that was a difficult process because you're trying to make sure that the communities themselves have exactly what they need, but it doesn't penalize one over the other in a case like this where we receive such a landslide of money that we could divide that up. So ARPA is done. Yay. Although the hard work is now in the county's hands in terms of the administration of it and the actual execution of how things will be done. There is still... There was about 10... 5 million that was devoted to small and medium-sized loans, which are coming up in terms of who will ultimately get those awards. There was a process in place, an RFI that people had to put in, and it was pretty arduous. And I believe very soon, we'll be seeing what the results of that are. And there are a number of the programs that were approved that have already started. There's the housing study that's going on right now. And a number of other things that you'll probably hear more from my colleagues this evening. Let's see. There are a couple of other areas... I'm trying to keep in track of my time here, but there's a couple of other areas where there are times where things come up and you just work to get them done and hope that they do the right thing. I know during the height of the pandemic, I got a call from Brian... From Bruce Murphy, who was asking for some help with how do we get more testing done? And at that time, while the state had been promising to open another regional facility, there had been no promised date and no promised location yet come out. And people were really quite nervous about it. So he was concerned that we just didn't have enough. And by calling the Health Department of the county, they were kind enough to put together what they call a fast stop kind of program at the senior center, in which the day was open for Yarmouth seniors to... Or anyone to go and get tested during this interim kind of period. And I was really appreciative of the fact that they immediately stepped up, in spite of how busy it was and all the other issues that they had, and tried to come up with a short-term solution while we were waiting to hear from the state on what was going to happen. And it just so happened that that same week, we learned where the new regional facility was going to be and what it was going to take. And it began to ease some of the concern, both for testing and for getting different shots and things that people wanted to receive. Let's see. I also... The... As with the Commissioners, the Assembly also gets involved with issues such as the machine gun program that the... Was proposed, which looks like it's going to go down, which I'm very happy to say. I know that individual people in the Assembly and the Assembly as a whole sent letters and things to various... As did the Commissioners, to various legal places to... And to legislators to try to get them to look at this in a much more... to try to get them to look at this in a much more precise way than the way that the military was presenting it, because they were suggesting that it would cause no issue whatsoever to our aquifer. And as the study now has proven, it's pretty clear that that was not correct. So, there are things like that, that on an ongoing basis, that the Assembly does get involved with. I'm trying to, I think that kind of gives you an overview of some of the various things that we do get involved with and what we do and how it kind of flows. And I know that my esteemed colleagues are going to present after me, and they're going to give you a great view of what it looks like, both in the County and the Cape Cod Commission, on some of the great exciting specific programs that are ongoing right now, which are really, really exciting and will make a huge difference in all the communities and Yarmouth especially, with a variety of things that are happening, both with the ponds and lakes and some of the housing, the things that are happening. So, I don't know if you have any questions?
Okay, we'll go to the Board to see if they have questions, but before I do that, thank you very much. And you have laid out very succinctly the political dynamics of the executive authority and the legislative authority of the county government, and different issues that involve the interaction between those branches, and also issues that are germane to Yarmouth. For example, making sure that the aquifer is protected. You mentioned the machine gun issue, that obviously has an effect on anybody that gets their water supply from the Sagamore Lins, which most of us do. You talked about, you know, testing facilities for COVID, which obviously impacts Yarmouth as well as other towns in the county and various issues like that. So, I think in a short period of time, you've done a lot, and so, I want to thank you for that. I'll go to the Board briefly to see if they have questions or comments. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and it's great to see you, Susan. And thank you for your service to the county. It's very much appreciated. You know, the Cape is well-served by county government, and I think one of the things that we wanted to do tonight was to give an opportunity for those that are actually serving and working in county government to talk a little bit about some of the things that they're working on. And I think it's great, Mr. Chairman, that you chose tonight to bring folks in and have this conversation. So often, we spend a great deal of our time talking to our own committees, our own department heads, and everything is very Yarmouth-focused. And it's nice, from time to time, to spend, you know, to spend some time literally focusing on the kinds of things that are going on at the county, but how they impact Yarmouth. And I think it's great to extend the invitation to our delegate to come in, you know, whenever there's an opportunity to come in and you've got something that you want to share with us, I think that's wonderful. So, it's great to see you. And again, I applaud your service. I see we have a number of county officials that are here, and they all do an outstanding job in serving Yarmouth and representing Yarmouth and looking out for the interests of Yarmouth, and I look forward to hearing what they have to say tonight as well. Thank you.
Yeah?
I don't have any questions. Thank you for the presentation. It was a pleasure to meet you tonight, and I'm looking forward to future.
No questions, but thank you very much, because I've kind of been in the dark about what is the Assembly of Delegates. And thank you, you did a great job of explaining it for me tonight.
Thank you.
And thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Don't forget our open invitation. Feel free to come in. We'd love to have you from time to time and hear from you.
And if there's anything that you feel that you'd like me to be aware of, I'm more than happy to come in and hear about it. If I just give you a card?
Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
I know how to find it, though, but it's great you've got cards.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next on our agenda is Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority, Kathy Jensen, Deputy Administrator, and an individual named Robert Lawton.
Yeah, I wonder who he is.
Good evening, and thank you for coming in. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
For the record, my name's Bob Lawton. I'm your representative on the CCRTA, and for the past three years, I've been the Chair of the Transit Authority. Today, I have Ms. Kathy Jensen, who is the Deputy Director of the CCRTA, with me to give some details on what we do, or what they do, actually, we don't, on the Board, we don't have to do too much. In your packet was a copy of the annual report that the Director, Tom Caher, had produced. Just for comment, I want to highlight that Tom Caher, Kathy Jensen, and Henry Sonowski, who's the Finance Director, have kept the assessments for the towns in the RTA at about 2.5% each year, which is not an easy thing to do with the number of things that are being done by the CCRTA. And one point is that on funding, most of the money comes from the state and federal government. The assessments make up certainly an important part, but not the majority by any stretch. One thing that Tom's team, along with Kathy, have done is to gather ridership information from the, obviously, the CCRTA buses, but from P&amp;B, Bus Service, Peter Pan, the Steamship Authority, and Highline, in order to increase the amount of money the CCRTA receives as reimbursements. Now, you don't think, you'd think everyone would do that, but they don't. This was an innovative way to increase the income to the Transit Authority. In addition, part of the funds that come from those increased grants go back to the Bus Services, Highline, and the Steamship Authority, for them to be able to increase their accommodation for ridership. So, it's kind of a partnership, but it really made a big difference in our budgeting, made it easy to do, which we're doing tomorrow, which will be a 2.5% increase, which is good. Stable management has been another key that Tom and Kathy have brought to the Transit Authority. In many transit authorities across the state, there's a constant, there's a churning of administrative staff. It's been very stable here, and I think that's been to our benefit to provide really, I believe, excellent service through the DART, the B-Bus, and Kathy will tell you what the other ones are, which I don't necessarily remember. And I think one of the things with stable management has been that the Transit Authority, no pun intended, has never standstill. They're really always trying to improve and do some new things, some innovative ideas in transportation. One of the things Kathy will talk about in a little more detail is the transition from the diesel and gasoline buses to electric buses. It's going to take a long time, and funding, Mark is on the MPO along with me, the amount of money that's going to be scheduled for those, that transition is very significant. It's going to be until, I think, 2028 to get it all done, but I think that's really important to have that transition made. So, with your permission, Mr. Chair, Ms. Jensen can give you some details on the, what the Transit Authority is doing.
Sure. First, I want to say Tom Caher is upset that he can't be here, and a special high to Bob and to Mark. But yeah, so to talk about our migration to zero emission vehicles, we hired a firm called Hatch to help us with the study. We want to make sure we take a careful and educated approach and consider all the factors that are involved, including types of vehicles, because weather, topography, number of people are all factors to consider on the vehicles and that, you know, to maintain the charge. We're working with Eversource, because, you know, we run into power disruptions, so we want to make sure that the power grids are stable. We have a website with a special, the Journey to Zero Emission Vehicles, and that has all of the documents that we've received to date, and that includes the best practices, excuse me, and the Energy Resiliency Identification Report. So, their final report should be completed by the end of October, and you can follow along on the website, on the ZEV Journey page on the website, and, you know, see everything that we're doing as we are doing it. So, the monthly newsletter also goes out to, I think there are several people in Yarmouth Government who have subscribed to that page as well. So, you can always go on there and subscribe to that and get updates. So, just a couple of other notes. Bob had mentioned the NTD reporting with our transportation partners. The funding increased by 5.2 million in FY '23, back to our region. We also have SmartDART, which is an Uber or Lyft-type service, that you can download the app on your phone, call a vehicle without having to call in advance, and they'll come and pick you up, and that's been pretty successful. And that's currently in the town of Barnstable in Yarmouth, with plans to expand Cape-wide. We have a 10-year strategic plan, five-year capital spending plan, that was completed late last year, so that's another 62-page document on our website, where you can see everything that we are up to and involved with. We're currently offering free fares on Wednesdays for seniors 60 and over, and free fares on Fridays for everybody on all of our fixed routes. And my final note is the Cape Flyer is coming back for its 10th anniversary season, and that's the, yes, that's the train that comes from South Station to Hyannis, and that's something that I've been following extremely closely. So, for our 10th anniversary, we're doing $10 round-trip fares for the entire month of June. So, we're going to make a big marketing splash with that as well. So, with that, if you have any questions?
Thank you. I'll start with Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kathy, it's great to see you.
It's good to see you, too.
And Bob, always good to see you. I can't say enough good things about the Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority, and please let Mr. Caher know that we very much appreciate all the help and all the service that Yarmouth gets from the RTA. For my fellow Board members, this RTA is probably one of the more leading, cutting-edge RTAs around, and the leadership that we've seen from this RTA in terms of its work on innovation, climate change, zero emissions, electrification of our bus system and transportation system, all this work is just incredible. It's remarkable, and we certainly see the benefits of it. Those of us in Yarmouth who follow the activities of the Steamship Authority are also impressed with the ability of the RTA to help the Steamship Authority get its hands on a new vessel. That's an incredibly creative endeavor, and once again, we tip our hat to not just the RTA staff, but also the leadership, Tom Caher. I mean, it's just unbelievable, the amount of federal funding that the RTA has been able to bring to the region. It's just remarkable. So, I think tonight, it gives us an opportunity just to hear firsthand some of the things that you're working on, but also, we can say thank you for all the great things that you're doing for us. So, it's great to see you. Thanks for being here, and thanks for all the work that you're doing.
Thank you very much.
Yeah?
Thanks for your presentation. I just have one quick question. Do you track at all your users? Who uses the?
Yes, yeah. So, we have a database full of people that use our on-demand service. Our fixed route, we are actually, we're going to be having some focus groups soon, which will give us a more in-depth idea about our ridership and, you know, who uses it and whose, you know, potential users that we need to get the word out to.
Be able to just give us kind of a ballpark in terms of which of our residents are utilizing the service?
So, we do have, the demographic is, it's very widespread. So, we have a lot of J1s. We have a lot of, you know, workers that don't have cars. We have our senior population, a lot of the senior population uses that to use for doctor's appointments or just to, you know, go to the hair salon. Our dialeride service is unique here on the Cape in that off, over the bridge, you need to be eligible. You need to have, you know, a doctor's note or be disabled or a senior. Anybody on Cape Cod can use our dialeride system. So, we have a lot of students that use the buses, fixed routes, and the dialeride service. So...
Okay. I noticed you also have two MAP vehicles. Are they maintained at the Senior Center? How does that work?
We work on them. We do the maintenance.
Okay, and are they available seven days a week?
You have, they're in your possession at the Senior Center.
What about drivers?
That is something that the COA is in control of.
Okay, all right. Thanks so much for the information.
You're welcome.
Doris?
I think you do a tremendous job. You know, as a former employer, one of the things that was so hard for us was getting our workforce to and from work, and your regional authority really came into play for us in making that happen. So, thank you very much. I don't have any questions for you.
Thank you. Can you tell me a little bit more about this plan to have a zero emissions fleet of buses? And where would these, I mean, you hear a lot about electric cars, but you don't hear much about carrier vehicles. Where would the infrastructure be to support this? Or how far have you been in the planning stage? Have you gotten that far to identify where it is that you're going to charge these buses? What kind of batteries are going to be involved? What's the mileage of a fully charged vehicle? How long is it going to take to charge a vehicle? Have you gotten into the weeds on any of that stuff?
We are definitely still in the planning stages, so that's what this study is going to provide for us. We are working with a lot of, I don't know the exact number, but a good amount of community leaders in order to place infrastructure throughout the Cape. We don't have the exact numbers, but like I had said, the weather, topography, the number of people on the bus, that all affects how long the charge is going to take or to, you know, last. We're also working with emergency responders, because putting out a fire with a bus or with a battery is a lot different than, you know, a regular car. So, we're thinking of every single thing that we can possibly think of to make sure that there's not going to be any disruption in service or any kind of, you know, errors. We don't want to make any errors. So, we're making sure that we're careful about all of that.
And this target date that you had, is that for a certain number of buses, or is that for all of the buses to reach the zero emissions? I think you, if I'm correct, we're talking about 2028?
So, that is, we're going to make sure that we have, once we have everything in place, once we have the study with the final report, then we'll be able to make a better determination as to whether that is feasible.
So, with 2028, can it be a jumping-off point? And how many vehicles do you have currently that you're running that you would have to switch over?
We have about 90 of our fixed routes and 100 of our DART.
Wow, that's a lot. It's a big project. So, this should probably be a phase-in thing, I would assume.
Definitely.
And that's why on the MPO, they have target dates each year to through '28 for funding, which is critical, obviously. It's not going to be necessarily from the towns.
It's like wastewater. You can't do it all in one day, right?
All in one day. No, no, no. And I think it's been good that the Transit Authority Administration is taking time, because when I was out in the western part of the state a while ago, I saw several electric buses. And I said to Tom Caher, how come they haven't, why are they so far ahead? He said, "Well, we wanted to wait, because out in the western part of the state, they were having a significant problem with the hills."
Oh.
And if you don't have the charging stations correctly spaced, they're not going to be getting up the hills.
Hmm.
And the cold, you have to worry about the cold. When it's cold, batteries don't hold a charge as often. When, when it's cold, batteries don't hold a charge as off, for as long. So these are the types of things that C C R T A administration wanted to take time, have the study done correctly, take the time to determine what the best bus is. And as technology improves, we may get a better bus to, as time goes on with the technology improvements.
Sorry, the shorter term, we'll be able to replace the smaller vehicles because that, that's not going to be as, as in-depth as the, as the fixed route buses and the shorter trips too. So we're going to start with the, the smaller minivan type buses.
Well, what you said makes perfect sense to learn from what's already happening out there and make sure you can avoid a lot of the problems that are being encountered in other parts of the state that are just.
That you wouldn't necessarily think of.
Yeah, exactly.
We also have to train mechanics to work on these vehicles. So we're working with the, the college. They're, they're going to be implementing a curriculum to train mechanics to work on the vehicles.
That's great.
Tom's raising his hand back there. Did you have a question? Make it quick because this isn't really a public comment.
Yes, I know, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Tom Nickenho and thank you folks for, for coming my way. I, I appreciate that. You guys do a great job. I was just, in my mind, as you know, Route twenty-eight here in our town is five miles and it's a, one of the most inconsistent, consistent roads we have. And on this west, east part of twenty-eight, it's very wide and on this portion towards Barnstable, it's very narrow. So what you have is you have the buses stopping, people entering, some cars pass, some cars don't pass. On the east side of our town, you have plenty of room for that and people can pass, but on the west side you can't. Has there any thought given to working with some of the business communities to let the bus pull in and be safe for passengers to jump onboard and not stop in the middle of twenty-eight, especially once it's real narrow and then blocking up traffic? So that's my comment. Thank you. And again, thanks for coming my way.
You're welcome. We are working closely with the Cape Cod Commission to.
You can speak into the microphone. No, it's okay because when you turn, he won't hear you anyway because.
Oh, okay. Yes, we are working with the Cape Cod Commission to identify spots that are, that need to be adjusted or, you know, tweaked in order to make it safer for people to be let off or get back on. The one thing about the, the R T A buses is that it's a flag-down service in most of the, the areas on the Cape. So anybody can go anywhere along the route and flag down the bus and then the bus will pull over and stop as long as it's safe. So that, that's the issue with that.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you for the nice presentation.
Now Bob just sits to the next one.
You have to sit in that chair over near the pole there and then. The next item is Regional Veterans Services. Greg Quilty, Director and Robert Lawton, Representative.
Once again, for the record, Robert Lawton, I'm your representative to the Cape Veteran Services Committee. I'm currently Chairman with me is Major Retired Greg Quilty, even though he did, does outrank me, at least in that part, but as Chair, I have some, a little sway, but anyway. We've provided in your packet a copy of the Veteran Service Annual Report, which has a lot of information and Greg will certainly be adding something to that. The Veteran Services Committee works with Mr. Quilty to provide high-quality veteran services to all Cape veterans. The budget, again, always an important point, has remained within a two and a half percent increase except for certain allowable expenses under the general law, such as retirement assessments and some payroll administrative expenses. I can say that since Greg Quilty has been the Director, he really is a hands-on Director. He's not someone that sits in the office and makes phone calls, things like that, but he's in the field quite a bit, visiting veterans in towns and their families to ensure that they're getting the benefits that they deserve. And that's been one of the hallmarks of Greg's tenure so far is to make sure through his training and extra training, contact with the state and even the federal government, to make sure that veterans on Cape and even particularly in Yarmouth are getting the benefits that, as I said before, they deserve. So Greg, can you give a quick update on some of the, the amount? And I think it's important to look at the amount of money that is being brought into the Cape through Veteran Services.
Thank you. I know it's been many years, I think, since anyone from my office has, has sat here. So appreciate, appreciate you having me. As is mentioned in the annual report, our primary mission is to serve the low-income veterans and dependents of your community, of the town of Yarmouth, under the Mass General Law Chapter 115. Now, that program started in the eighteen-sixties, around the Civil War time, and no other state, and I, and I mean that specifically, no other state does this. We're the only state that gives out checks to low-income veterans and widows every month. And there's no federal money involved in that. So the checks come from the town of Yarmouth to the veteran or the dependent that is in financial need. Obviously, the program has morphed over the years and had different additions to it as anyone would, but it is the only one in the country. So we're pretty proud of that and I think the town should be as well. The money obviously comes from, it is reimbursed. That budget, those benefits to the veteran or the dependent are reimbursed to the town by the state at seventy-five percent. So essentially, the Chapter 115 budget is reimbursed at seventy-five percent and the town pays twenty-five percent of that. You can think of the budget as really being two parts. There's the Chapter 115 budget, that is what we call the Chapter 115 budget, Veterans Budget, which is the one that provides the checks to the, to the recipient, to the veteran or the widow or dependent. And sometimes the parents of a veteran qualify. And then the other part of the budget is not reimbursed and that's the assessment for the operational budget. The operational budget is the, covers all the staff, your Veteran Services Officers, the administrative staff, the office rent, the pencils, the software, the, everything is, is covered by that assessment. The assessment is predicated on equalized valuations. So when the Department of Revenue publishes equalized valuations, that gets a portion per town in our fifteen-town district. So you will see from time to time, when the budget's presented to the whole board, which includes all the town managers and town administrators, that the, sometimes it can fluctuate up and down and that's because of the equalized valuations. This coming year, for the new budget, I think we had three towns that decreased and most increased a little bit. But as my boss here, he says, he's, he says I can outrank him, but we have done, I think, a really good job about staying below the two and a half percent. So that's the way the, the budget works. The, the benefits that are given out under the Chapter 115 budget are to honorably discharged veterans or their dependents. In the V A world, V A benefits can be given out to veterans that don't have honorable discharges. But Massachusetts requires that they be honorably discharged. If the veteran coming, if a town of Yarmouth veteran comes in and he's less than sixty-five years old or she's less than sixty-five, they are required to work, if they're able to work, to get these benefits. We have a tremendous amount of paperwork we have to put in before we ever put that, that amount of money on a warrant to you to get that check out. We have to go through months of bank statements, check all the deposits. We have to get all their insurance information. It can be a huge stack of information we get. And there's a number of checks and balances before that ever gets to your warrant. Once the Veteran Service Officer and the admin folks in my office get the package together, they put it all together, they review it, they calculate out what the, what the benefit should be, then after they approve it, it comes to me, I approve it and then I send it to the state. And the State Department of Veteran Services has a group of what we call authorizers and they review it. And if there's a $50 deposit from a ninety, that a ninety-year-old widow had, we're getting a call about it. So that all happens before you ever see the amount of money on the warrant. So our staff works really, really hard to be good fiduciaries of, of the money that's being given out. As I said, the Massachusetts law mandates this and Massachusetts is the only state in the country that mandates that all three hundred and fifty-one towns in the Commonwealth have a Veteran Service Officer. But as you know, you're part of a district and what the Commonwealth allows is to, for any town that geographically touches to form a Veterans District. And the main purpose of that is to provide a more fiscally responsible way of doing business, if you will. So in essence, you spread the cost amongst towns. And, and I will give you an example of that. The, the approved budget, operational assessment budget for next year for Yarmouth is $50,138.21. Now, you don't, towns don't have to join the district. They can, but they are mandated to have a Veteran Service Officer and a, of Department of Veteran Services in their town. I picked a couple of similar-sized towns as an example. Andover is similar to the population here. They have one Veteran Service Officer who's also the Director, but one, one in their office and one admin person. Their operating budget, not the money that goes out to the veterans or the widows or any of that, their operating budget runs over the last three or four years between a hundred and seventy thousand and a hundred and ninety-nine thousand. Yarmouth is fifty. Falmouth is the only town on the Cape that's not in my district or your district. They're, they have one Veteran Service Officer and an, and an admin person. Their operating budget, not the money going to the veterans in the town of Yarmouth, is $166,998. So I think that illustrates the benefit of having a district. And I know Bob worked on that district and, and maybe some of you here have as well in the past. I'm the beneficiary of it, I guess, and I think all the towns are the beneficiaries of it. But on the V A side, that's Chapter 115 side, your Veteran Services Officers are inundated with V A claims. We assist veterans with their V A compensation claims, what we call V A pensions for low-income veterans, and that's all federal money and that costs the town nothing, other than the fact that we're working those, those claims. As you can see from the annual report, last year, eight million, three hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and five dollars and twenty-four cents went out in tax-free benefits to Yarmouth veterans and dependents. So we assisted in getting that money into their hands. We're obligated to find alternative sources of income and when we do, that minimizes the need for the Chapter 115 benefits and, and most often usually supplants the need for Chapter 115 benefits. Capewide, we did seventy, over seventy-five million. Capewide and Chapter 115 benefits, we gave out 1.2 million last year. We are the largest Veterans District by population served in the Commonwealth. We're by far the largest.
How many, Greg? How many people?
About veteran, veteran-wise, we're about twenty-two thousand, more than the city of Boston. So your Veteran Service Officers and our staff, right now, our admin staff of one and a half-time receptionist are super busy. We field over nine thousand calls a, a year. So the, but bringing in that money helps the towns as well, not only in your local economy, but also by minimizing the, the drain on, or the burden on the Chapter 115 program or your twenty-five percent that you would pay of that. The, we do have to maintain, once you join a district, you have to maintain minimum staffing guidelines. Towns are required, if they're a single town and they have a population of more than twelve thousand, they're required by law to have a full-time Veteran Service Officer. If you join a district, as we are a district here, then minimum staffing guidelines become mandatory. Our office is right at the minimum staffing guideline. We do have a vacancy right now. I'm not counting that. Technically, we're below the minimum staffing guideline, but that's only because of some natural turnover. So we're hiring like every other department is and finding that a challenge as well, like many departments do. I'll try to wrap it up here so I know your time is, you got a lot to do tonight. I will say that your staff, I think you can be pretty proud of them and it is your Department of Veteran Services. We want and hope that you think of us as your town Department of Veteran Services. We work for you and your, your town veterans. We, we do thousands and thousands of V A claims in the office, thousands of them. And those are incredibly burdensome. We are finally getting some help from the V A up here, at least once a month, to bring some service officers from the V A to assist us. We're part of a pilot program with the V A, the first in the state to use a new system. We call it the Vera System. It's a, a scheduling system where we can, instead of being middlemen, we can connect the veteran directly with the people that handle the claim at the V A, where the claim is going anyway. And so we're doing that. We have a digital way of doing it. We have a, we can, they've taught us how to schedule. So we're, we're trying to ease that burden that we have right now where we're overwhelmed with V A claims. If you've watched TV and seen the Camp Lejeune ad or anything like that, since the PACT Act was signed in, in August and now opened up things like hypertension to Vietnam veterans and all these new presumptive diseases and environmental exposures from the Gulf War and Camp Lejeune and Vietnam, new presumptive diseases, that has caused a huge influx in our office. And, and our work's never done, but you have a staff, your Veteran Services Officers have the most active duty time of any department in the Commonwealth. We have over eighty, eighty years in my office of active duty time. So we've seen a lot. And so when a veteran comes in, there's not much we haven't seen or experienced when they come in. But we, we do have the most active duty experience of any town or district Department of Veteran Services in the Commonwealth. Just real quick, challenges, I mentioned some of them. Maybe on the little silver lining, veteran homelessness on the Cape, you hear a lot about. And since I started in this business, maybe ten, eleven years ago or more, the, the numbers have gone down. We have less of it, which is, that's a good thing. And we have some what we call V A S H vouchers, V A Supportive Housing vouchers, that are unused right now. That never happened six, seven, ten years ago on the Cape. So now, some of that might be due to rising real estate prices and people moving out and, and that kind of thing, but at least there aren't as many on the streets. It doesn't mean there's none. I literally, no exaggeration, got a call just before I came over here of a veteran living in a car and wear him. So I called him, we're, we're taking care of that. We have mental health challenges that are not necessarily combat-related. We have mental health challenges that are not necessarily combat-related, and we're having a lot of difficulty with serving those veterans on the Cape, like many, like your police departments and your fire departments are having the same challenge. Because the VA, while they'll give money to a veteran for disability, they will not send a human being out into the field. So often, that's me or your Veterans Service Officer, and we're not mental health professionals. But we'll be called to those crisis situations sometimes, and, you know, so we do the best we can when we face it. So on the housing front, we're lucky, we have the new Dennis House that's full, we have a new house in Hyannis, brand-new, on Pitcher's Way, will house eight veterans. The big challenge now, like most of the Cape, is really for veterans that are smaller families with, that need affordable housing, and not so much the single homeless veteran, but that kind of issue. So I wanted to say thank you, your, number one, your assessors' office, Andy Machado, Tara Monroe, Marge Springer, they're one of the most proactive assessors' offices for veterans exemptions on the Cape. One of the few assessors' offices that will call me when they find a veteran and think, does this one qualify? And so we appreciate that. Also, very much want to thank your town finance and treasurer's department through COVID. You can imagine the challenge of paperwork during COVID, and we worked, we came to the office during COVID. We did not work from home, my office. There's no way to serve the population we serve of elderly veterans that don't use computers, don't have smartphones, without doing it face-to-face. So we had to do everything face-to-face. But when we did that, and we got the paperwork to you in spite of town halls being closed and other things, your finance department and treasurer's, we didn't miss a beat as far as getting those checks into the hands of those veterans that needed them. And just to give you an idea of how low-income that is, the income limit on the Chapter 115 side, if you're single, you can't make more than $2,265 a month. Try to live on the Cape at that level. Married couple, $3,052. And they can't have more, if they're single, they can't have more than $8,400 in the bank. And if they're married, they can't have more than $16,600 in the bank. So they don't qualify for your Chapter 115 benefits if they're not under that limit, so you can be sure that all of those checks that the town of Yarmouth writes to our low-income veterans and widows are going to those who are truly in financial hardship. And I think that's it. Any questions?
That's not even Social Security. I mean, Social Security is $3,000 for an individual.
Wow. Can I just ask, have the numbers gone up or down?
Good question. In terms of veteran population numbers, even statewide, numbers have been going down a great deal. VA claims dollars went up because younger veterans are filing more disability claims, they're more astute to do that, and they're being trained to do that before they get out than your older veterans. But we have a lot of veterans dying. Because, think of your youngest Vietnam veteran, who, if he was lucky, when he was 18, got over there in '75, just as it was ending. How old are they now? That would be the youngest Vietnam veteran. So unfortunately, Vietnam veterans represent the vast, largest portion of veterans in the state. While we see that going down a lot, like I said, our work seems to be growing instead of going down, but that's because people are becoming more knowledgeable about veterans' benefits. And on the Chapter 115 program, we always put out a little appeal, and that is, if you know of a, if you see a veteran struggling, you think he's struggling financially or she's struggling financially, and especially for widows, often widows who are married to veterans don't know that this program is here. And so because we're so busy, one challenge we have is being out in town, doing outreach as much as we would like to be. So we ask that everybody be our outreach worker. If you know a widow who is married to a veteran, have them call us that way. But the numbers are going down, yes, they are, overall.
Thank you.
No questions. It was an amazing presentation. Thank you.
Mark. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Greg, it's great to see you again. For full disclosure, I worked, when I was with the Congressman, worked with your predecessors quite a bit, and Norman Gill, Sid Chase and company, and
Ed Marigan.
Ed Marigan. And together, we were able to convince the VA to set up a healthcare clinic for veterans here on Cape Cod. And that's one of the things I'm probably most proud of, is all that hard work with your predecessors to provide added services to veterans. The presentation was outstanding tonight. I'm really happy that we finally had the chance to connect at a board meeting and to hear about some of the great work that goes on. We have veterans and families that would be lost without you, and we can't thank you enough for all the time and energy that you put into this job. It's a 24/7 job, I know that, and it's appreciated, it really is.
Credit goes to my staff. They carry a burden, and they deal with a lot of people that are about to die, actually, and you have to, you sit with a couple, maybe suffering from an Agent Orange cancer, and you have to tell the spouse, make sure that disability goes on the death certificate so that we can get your benefits after, and they go home with that all the time. But it's a supremely rewarding job. Thank you.
No, it's incredible, and the help that you provide for veterans for the federal benefits. That whole process can be incredibly cumbersome and very challenging, and unfortunately, way too often, our veterans, those that serve, get denied when they're entitled to benefits. And it's through your efforts and the support and the help that you provide that enables veterans to basically stick it out and to fight through appeals and providing that support to them. It's amazing work that you do for so many people, and we can't thank you enough for all of your efforts. My question for you is, what more can we do to help you?
Unless you want to give us more staff, which you probably hear from every department.
So even though we're part of a district, we could actually go above and beyond?
Well, that would have to be next year, I think. With through the budget process, and we have discussed that in our last budget hearing and meeting, that it was going to be critical very, very soon, and probably next year, to add some staff to the office. As passionate as Greg is, which you can see, and we're very lucky to have him as our Director, there's only so much, there aren't any more than 24 hours in a day, unfortunately.
Yeah. Well, I'd just like to put it out there, maybe there can be more discussions after this meeting about this. But I know at the county level, we have our administrator here and our assistant administrator, there's been a lot of focus at the county level on where we can expand and improve mental health services. I know in our police department, where we've been very successful in getting grant funds to provide additional support to deal with this problem, we have a lot of calls coming into our police department where we need some real help.
I know.
And so we've expanded that capability, and this board's been very supportive of it. So I think both here in town, Yarmouth, but also county-wide, we're very interested in exploring ways in which we can better understand your needs and your issues, and ways we can work together to address them.
Thank you.
That's a pledge I take personally, and I look forward to having the opportunity to spend some more time together, to see what we can work on together.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Greg, I just have a few comments for you. I agree with Selectman Horgan that your presentation was unusual. It's very, very clear, you give good examples. It was really a nice experience to just sit here and enjoy absorbing the things you had to say. You really have a great talent for presenting information in a very interesting and captivating way, so I just wanted you to know that. The other thing I want to do is thank you for the incredible work that you do. It's very obvious that you're extremely committed to veterans. You're very, as Bob said, very passionate about the work that you do. I think they have the perfect person in the job, there's no question about that. And we all know the great sacrifices that our veterans have made for our country, and it's just, to me, just so nice to know that there's somebody like you standing behind them.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. I have to thank my staff always to them.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks.
So the next item we have is County Commissioner's update. Beth Albert, Administrator, Vera Herrick, Assistant County Administrator. I think we're going to have a movie, or a slideshow, or something.
I can entertain you.
Good evening, ladies.
Good evening. Thank you for inviting us.
Thank you for coming.
To be here tonight. Okay. And this is the advance? Thank you, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Appreciate it. So again, thank you for inviting us to present tonight. I'm Beth Albert, I'm the County Administrator, and
I'm Vera Herrick, I'm the Assistant County Administrator.
It's nice to have you both.
Thank you.
So in keeping with, we have a brief presentation for you. What I thought, given the, you know, 15 minutes and knowing that this is a long meeting and there's many, many things that Barnstable County does, I wanted to focus tonight's presentation on a couple of things. Primarily, we're just wrapping up National County Government Month, which was in April. So I want to focus on some of the county programs and services that protect Cape Cod water. That was our focus for National County Government Month. So in my presentation, I'm going to highlight a few of the county water quality projects and programs that benefit Yarmouth residents. I'm going to focus a little bit on the new Aqua Fund, which is an expansion of our septic loan program. This would be of interest to you. Vera's going to do an update on ARPA, and then also talk about the national opioid settlement. Did prepare, let's see. So before I get started, I just wanted to point out, last year, the county went through a major rebranding. We changed our website to capecod.gov, much shorter than barnstablecounty.org, and we have, this is an award-winning website that I give great thanks to our communications manager, Sonya Sheasley, for working on. We're really proud of the website, and we use it to update county residents on all the programs and services that we offer. So let's hope this works. Oh, there's supposed to be a video behind this. Hmm. Well, you might not be able to see a video.
Uh-oh.
Something's happening. Give it a minute. Like I said, you know, the focus for April was on water quality, so we have a three-minute video, if we can get it to work, from our county commissioners, talking about the different water quality programs that the county offers. And if we can't get it to run, I'll just walk through it.
It's promising.
The amount of work these people do in that office.
Coherent.
I have my pages.
I could have gone 20 more minutes. He was excellent. He really was.
Greg is, I worked with him for many years with homeless issues. I love he's still here. Thanks. He's amazing.
Greg has left.
Well, we might not see the three-minute video.
I think Bob is very determined.
Okay.
I hope she's had that water tested a little bit.
We're actually very excited about the video. It's really good.
It features someone you know.
Yes.
Does.
Do you wonder who?
Does I wonder?
Why the X breaks? Trying to handle it.
He's doing that, I could
Oh, was that that enable content thing?
Yeah.
Codfish knows all, right there.
Well, maybe I'll just, in the interest of time, just move on.
Well, we could also, I could also ask you some questions, like if there's three things that you wanted to see changed about Mark Forrest, what would it be?
So like I said, April was National County Government Month with a focus on water quality, and protecting Cape Cod water is critical to the survival of our unique coastal region. Barnstable County is committed to preserving the Cape's drinking water, our surface water and groundwater. And as you may see, as mentioned in the video, Barnstable County protects our water in a variety of ways in working with the 15 towns. So I just want to highlight a couple of the important programs that we do run at the county. One is, and again, I've just selected some of the ones I thought would be the most interest to the folks watching and to Yarmouth residents. So one is the hazardous waste collection sites. So the county, through the Cooperative Extension, just released its 2023 household and hazardous waste collection sites. There's 24 of these that are scheduled over the course of the year. They run from the spring to the fall. In Yarmouth, on July 15th and October 7th, there'll be two waste collection dates. And the types of items collected are pesticides, lawn chemicals, cleaners, disinfectants, pool chemicals, paints, polishes, and stains. So this is, the hazardous waste collection program is run by Barnstable County's Cooperative Extension. It is free of charge for county residents, and on those particular dates, they would be free for Yarmouth residents. I also want to tell you a little bit about the Water Quality Lab. So Barnstable County runs a Water Quality Lab that tests private wells, municipal water supplies, as well as water districts. They do a lot of different things at the Water Quality Lab. I think residents can bring in samples to have their water tested. They also do a landfill monitoring program to look at groundwater contamination from The other big area that we are involved in right now is, and I'm sure you've heard, is a PFAS cleanup site at the former Fire Training Academy on Flint Rock Road. We just, we're in a five-phased cleanup with Mass. Department of Environmental Protection, Mass. DEP, and right now, we're in the phase where we're measuring the extent of the PFAS plume on the groundwater, and we just got done with a cost estimation that it's going to cost the county anywhere between $22 million and $59 million over the next four years to clean up that site and make it through the five-step phases that we have to work with DEP on. So it's a huge project. Once we get through the cleanup, there'll be about $1 million in annual cost for operation and maintenance of whatever remediation system we put in place. So as you can imagine, this is a big focus of mine. We have hired an assets and infrastructure manager who is spending about 80% of his time just working on this one project, in addition to licensed site professionals that we bring on to help run the program. So unfortunately, I don't think we're going to see the video, which is a shame. Just a couple other water quality highlights. Just a couple other water quality highlights. The county also offers other wastewater management programs. We have the Alternative Septic Test Center, which is located out at Joint Base Cape Cod. And this is a really interesting program of the county. The test center researches ways to reduce nitrogen pollution through the development of innovative septic systems. It also tests for emerging contaminants. And this is really important at this point when so many of the towns, just like Yarmouth last week at your town meeting, is moving forward with their, you know, their wastewater management projects. So, the thing I wanted to focus on that I thought would be of most interest, the Health Department, we administer what used to be called the Septic Loan Fund, but we have just rebranded that. It's called the Aqua Fund. Thank you. So, Barnstable County will continue to provide low-interest betterment loans to Cape Cod homeowners faced with the cost of replacing their septic system or connecting to sewer systems. And this is a big change for us. In the past, we had a 5% loan program. And Barnstable County actually manages the largest septic loan program in the Commonwealth. And we've issued over $54 million in loans to county residents since 2007. So, we are committed to providing low-cost financing options for lower-income residents. And so, just this spring, we instituted a 0% - 0% to 4% interest rate for loans based on area median income. So, if you are a person, a household, with less than 120% of area median income, we can offer you a betterment loan for a 0%. And then you can see it goes up 2% and 4%. We have, we're producing information, public information, about what kind of projects qualify for a loan and who qualifies. I think the most important thing is, all of the information is on our website, capecod.gov. And also, right on our front page, you can get the link right to the Aqua Fund. And it will tell you how to sign up, how to get the loan, and work with county staff who can answer any questions that residents may have. So, right now, with this new program, with the Aqua Fund, almost all residential septic system projects qualify for at least a 4% loan. And then the 0% and 2% interest loans are available for new applications, for new homeowners. And the project must be for the installation of a sewer connection, or advanced nitrogen or phosphorus-removing septic system technology. And property must be single-family owner-occupied, year-round primary residence. So, this is a big, a big change. It's a big program to be able to offer 0% and 2% interest rate loans to people who need sewer connections or need to upgrade a failing septic system. So, again, I think for folks listening, if they go to capecod.gov, the link to the Aqua Fund program is right on the front page. And again, there's a phone number that they can access, that they can get their, any questions they may have about eligibility, if they're eligible, et cetera, answered. So, that's the Aqua Fund.
Can we pause just one minute on the Aqua Fund? So, you said that almost anybody can qualify. I am assuming from what you said, there's a cutoff income rate over, you know, if somebody makes over a certain amount of money, they don't qualify. Is that my correct in that assumption?
So, if you make, so right now, so it's based on area median income. So, right now, that is about $82,000. So, if you make more than 180% of that, you would qualify for a 4% loan.
So, what's that area medium again? 80 what?
About 82.
82,000?
Just round it up.
Yeah.
Okay. What, and the other question I had, what's the term of those loans? How much time does a person have to pay those back?
So, it's a maximum of 20 years.
20?
They're available for residential properties only.
And how often does a person make payments back to you? Monthly?
I believe they are monthly.
So, they get, just like a mortgage, they get a certain sum of money they pay each month?
Yes. So, it's something I think a lot of people are interested in. Like I said, I mean, since 2007, we've issued already over $54 million in loans. And it's a revolving fund. So, up until now, we've only offered 5% interest. And that's, so reducing it to 0% and 2% and 4%, we're really gonna be able to serve more people, lower-income people, who are really gonna, you know, benefit from having a 0% or 2% interest rate.
And back in the day, 5% was considered a pretty modest interest rate when banks were paying that in their savings account, right?
So, you know, it's, we're expecting a lot of growth in that program, a lot of expansion. And so, like I said, we just, you know, hit the on switch in the spring. We've been planning it for over, I'd say, the last 12 to 18 months. But we did launch it this spring and it's up and running. So, that's great news for county residents, for Yarmouth residents as well.
Now, that could be very helpful to people in our community. It could be really, really helpful because we're gonna have a betterment for them, for being able to hook up to the system. But then they're gonna have to, we estimate, $8,000 to $10,000 to connect
Connect, please.
From their home to the system. And that's a great funding source.
So, I'm gonna turn it over to Vera. She's gonna talk a little bit about, kind of with this theme of how the county invests in protecting Cape Cod water, talk a little bit about how the ARPA funds, the $41 million in American Rescue Plan Act funds are, were used.
So, good evening. I'm sure ARPA is forefront in your minds, since it is a, you know, an enormous sort of once-in-a-generation windfall to municipalities, such as Yarmouth's and the county. We are in receipt of $41.4 million in ARPA funding directly from the U.S. Treasury. Yourselves receive indirect funding somewhat over $3 million, I believe. And then, we have awarded to Yarmouth a further $1 million from our $41 million as part of a allocation to all 15 towns. But just focusing specifically on water, nearly all of the towns that have submitted applications thus far are using the ARPA funding, at least from the county's allocation, for water quality, infrastructural-related projects. So, between 77% and 82% are actually, of the $10 million that we have allocated to the towns in Barnstable County are going for water projects. There is a, I have a range there, 77% to 82% because we're still waiting for Brewster to come in with regard to what their plans will be. But it's likely to be water-related as well. The county is also putting, we are also going to have county-related projects using the ARPA funding. And of the 13.7 million that's been allocated to county projects, 70, again, about three-quarters is going toward water quality-related projects. That's about $10 million worth, give or take. And so, I mean, these two, these two factors combined to, of the $41 million, a good 44% are for water quality-related work. It's consistent with the fact that water quality-related issues are one of the several existential problems we face on Cape Cod, the other being housing. And you can't solve housing until you solve your water quality and wastewater-related issues. And so, this is a fundamental, a fundamental ethic that we bring to the allocation of the county funding that we've received for ARPA. Our Board of Commissioners and our Assembly of Delegates have worked in unison with county staff in order to bring these priorities, create these priorities, and bring them forward to an allocation process, and then ultimately to committing the funds to specific projects. And we're well along in that endeavor. It's ARPA-related issues. Questions on ARPA? You probably hear a lot about it. Another area that we are trying to add as much value as possible as a regional governmental entity to, for our towns, is in the area of monitoring the now two national opioid settlements that are coming to, and the payments that are coming to both us as the county in a relatively small amount, but in much larger and more impressive amounts to our towns on Cape Cod. All 15 towns have received allocations from Settlement 1 and Settlement 2. And I've provided a fair amount of information to the towns that help estimate the amount of funds coming, emanating from both of these settlements. And I've done a fair amount of work in that regard and tried to be as helpful as possible to our town administrators and town staffs ultimately, that are going to be charged with deciding how to spend these funds. The funds will be coming over a 15-year period, give or take. Settlement 1 is stretched over 15 years. Settlement 2, and there's various defendants in these settlements. And Settlement 2, some of the defendants are paying over a longer period of time and others are paying over a seven-year period. So, the funding comes and fits and starts, but we do have a way to predict the flows by year, by defendant. And so, that information is available for your staff to plan for expenditures. Now, this isn't meant to be read verbatim, but what it is, does show us here, and obviously, lots of copies of this can be made available and have been. This is the, this is the funding coming to the towns from both Settlements 1 and 2 and then summarized. And you'll notice the bottom, not least of which alphabetically, is Yarmouth's allocation, we couldn't help noticing, is extremely low relative to your demographic footprint. And so, I've done what I can to support the Yarmouth's work in appealing to the state, perhaps finding ways to make that right on some kind of proportional basis. There are other towns in the state that have nearly identical populations and identical fatalities, so morbidity and mortality from opioid-related overdose, that have three times the amount of money coming to them from these opioid settlements than does Yarmouth. Identical population nearly, coastal community, identical number of fatalities. So, something is amiss there. Hopefully, it can be corrected. And I think the conversations have begun in that regard between, I think, between your town and the appropriate authorities.
Can you tell us how those numbers were allocated? How they...
Oh, gosh. I wish I could. The National Settlement Attorneys, our state attorneys general, ours and others, sort of agreed, agreed with the National Opioid Settlement Attorneys and their staff on an apportionment by town and by county all across the country. And those calculations, we have not been able to, I know Bob's been looking for them, I've been looking for them. We've not been able to look into that black box to see how that was done. And it's an excellent question. It's the first question one would ask. But the ink is dry on that agreement between our state attorney general and the National Settlement Attorney. So, now it becomes a question of, I'm just going back one slide. So, the funds coming to us are 40% of what is coming to the state at large. And so, there's a 60% bolus of money from these funds of nearly $1 billion over the period for onward use by the state. The State Opioid Remediation Advisory Council is working with BSAS, Bureau of Substance Addiction Services, at the state to program the use of those funds. And it's within the programming of those funds and those decisions, perhaps Yarmouth's requests and needs can be recognized in that regard, in that channel. Yeah. So, it's quite impressive, the disadvantage which Yarmouth has been placed relative to these settlement funds. So, thank you.
So, just in closing, I will say, we just want to highlight, at least I wanted to highlight, some of the water quality programs that we offer. If there's any interest at any time in the future, be happy to come back and talk about some of the other county programs, like the SHINE program, mental children's behavioral health, different Cooperative Extension programs that are available to the Town of Yarmouth residents that might be of interest. So, I'm always available to come back and talk about some of those programs, and I'm happy to do so. Thank you.
Mr. Board, has any questions or comments, Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And it's great to see you tonight, both of you. You get a good example of the great work that, and the talent that I work with at Barnstable County. Both Beth and Vera work incredibly hard to help make sure that we can serve the needs of the towns. And they've done great work on these initiatives. As Beth said, there's an opportunity to come back and talk about some other things that are going on whenever the board decides it. I'm just happy that we've got a chance to get the two of you to come here and to talk a little bit about some of the work that you're doing. And at least we can get, put names and faces together so that we can get better acquainted with, as a board, all the great things that you're doing. So, thanks for everything that you're doing Capewide, and thanks for all the great things that you're doing here.
Thanks for your support, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
I agree. It was a good presentation. I learned a lot, and I know our residents are learning a lot. So, I'd love to have you come back and talk about more county programs and just so that we understand what's available and just the amount of work that's being done that I'm not even aware of. So, I'd love to have you come back. Thank you for coming tonight, though.
You're welcome.
George.
Thank you very much for coming. You know, it's one of those things that we really need to be educated more on. And I think our, members of our population in town really do too. So, to hear that you can come back and talk to us sounds great. While you were doing your excellent presentation, I also hopped on your website there, for capecod.gov. It's very easy to get to and it's a very nice site with a lot of information.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
A lot of work went into it, and we're really proud of it. We call it the award-winning website because it did win an award for how easy it is to access, so.
No, it was very easy. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I just have two quick comments. First of all, thank you very much for being here. And as you know from recent events, that this town is very committed to water quality. And so, we're always welcome, welcoming new insights and information on that issue and will be for the next 40 years at least.
Yes, yeah.
Which is gonna be the scope of our project. The other thing I wanted to say to you is, thank you very much for the efforts that you're trying to make right, that formula on the opioid settlements for Yarmouth. I think a lot of people in your position might just say, hey, well, that's the way it goes, you know? This is a, this is a formula and this is where you land on the scale. But I know, and I've known from conversations with Mark and things he said at this meeting, that you're making a diligent effort to see if you can provide some equity, which is...
Not acceptable.
The word of the day to Yarmouth and to the people who may benefit from the allocation of those funds in this town. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good evening.
The next person that we're going to talk to on county issues is the Executive Director, Kristi Senatari.
Oh, thank you.
Shall I start or should we wait for Mr. Forrest?
Well, good evening, Kristi. And thank you for coming. We really appreciate you being here. Mark will be with us momentarily, so you can begin at any time. I think he's a little bit ahead of the curve on the rest of us anyway.
Sounds good. Well, good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here this evening. I'm Kristi Senatari, the Executive Director of the Cape Cod Commission. I know you've had quite a lengthy agenda this evening and heard a lot of presentations, so I'll keep my remarks brief. But I am joined here this evening with Sarah Colvin. She's our Communications Manager. And so, certainly, any follow-up that might be needed after tonight's meeting, we're happy to do so. And I also wanted to introduce Dennis Previnson, who is the member on the Cape Cod Commission from the Town of Yarmouth. And certainly, want to thank him very much for his hard work, for his significant time commitment, and his dedication to the Cape Cod Commission. And I would love to be able to offer him a few moments to speak at the end of my remarks, if that's comfortable with the board.
That's fine. Whatever you wish.
That's great. And then I also just wanted to take a moment, and I know you've already heard from her tonight, but to recognize and to thank Delegate Susan Warner from the Barnstable County Assembly of Delegates, and thank her for her support as well of the work that we do at the commission. So, what I have handed out to you this evening is a copy of our 2022 Year in Review. I realize it's now May. And I have been meeting with the 14 select boards across the Cape as well... as well as the Barnstable Town Council, over the course of the past several months, really talking about some of the work that we did in 2022, but focusing more on some of the priority areas that we have at the Cape Cod Commission into 2023, and, and even into next year. So some of what that entails is not necessarily a comprehensive look at all of the work that we did in 2022, but does provide some of the highlights of some of our priority projects. So tonight I wanted to focus on just three issue areas that are critical to the Cape and priority areas of the Cape Cod Commission. Certainly, we could be here for a very long time talking about a lot of the priority and critical areas that we need to be focusing on at the commission, but I did just want to highlight three. Probably not surprising, water quality. And first off, congratulations on an excellent vote that you had more recently at a town meeting, we're very pleased to see that move forward. Water quality is certainly something that's been impacting the, the Cape for quite some time. I want to talk about, a little bit about coastal resiliency and climate change, and then pivot to housing, also one of our more pressing regional challenges. So in terms of water quality, much of the work that we've been doing is focused on coastal water quality efforts. We've seen significant efforts increase amongst the towns. We've seen communities making progress, not only in planning for addressing our nitrogen impairments, but towns are taking advantage of available funding and financing opportunities as well. And as you know, we provide administrative and technical support to the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund Management Board, and I would thank Select Board Member Mark Forrest for his participation there. But just last year alone, the Water Protection Fund awarded about $28 million in grants to support wastewater planning and funding across the Cape, to see those projects be implemented. And to date, that fund has distributed nearly $100 million back into the Cape to support wastewater projects. So we're really pleased to see that hopefully the, the Town of Yarmouth will be able to obtain some of that funding. We're excited that you're on the Intended Use Plan for 2023, and look forward to, to working with you to make sure that we can see those, those dollars come back into your community. We were also pleased to commence work on our freshwater initiative. So while, while a lot of our focus has been on our marine estuaries and embayments, we have about 890 ponds and lakes across, across our region, and less than 10% of those are actually monitored. So that really leaves us with limited available, available data to determine the health of our freshwater lakes and ponds. So we are moving forward with a significant data collection component of our freshwater initiative, and much of the work that we'll be doing to address our freshwater quality is focused on reaching out to stakeholders. So it began with meetings with all 15 towns, so our staff has met with your staff, to really get an understanding of some of the challenges that you're seeing as it relates to freshwater, as we pulled together some baseline data and information, and really set out some strategies to address the impacts that we're seeing in some of our freshwater quality in our ponds and lakes. This will really help us to develop a framework and a menu of strategies. We know that what, what might work in some areas across the Cape may not work in others. So we want to make sure that what we put together is something that can still work in, in the entire Cape. While some of these might be regional solutions, we also want to make sure that there's a menu of, of strategies and options that will work to address our freshwater challenges that we're seeing. So pivoting a little bit from water quality, coastal resiliency very closely tied to that, climate change certainly a focus of ours as well. And last year, we completed the first Climate Action Plan for Cape Cod. So we now have a plan to address some of our climate challenges, and much of that focuses on coastal resiliency as well. And some of you are probably familiar with the Low-Lying Roads Project that we have now initiated in all 15 towns. I know Yarmouth was one of the frontrunners, so we were pleased to see that you had an opportunity to work with our staff and to prioritize some road segments that could potentially be priorit, be prioritized for additional planning, additional funding, additional resources to address some potential infrastructure challenges that we might see due to coastal, due to, to sea level rise and other coastal resiliency challenges. And we're very pleased that all 15 towns are working towards that, so we'll now have some tangible plans to put together to really pull it, pull together more resources for, for the Cape. As it relates to climate change, we're also working through a number of potential model bylaws, and some of these are addressing coastal resiliency, and, and some of these are for large-scale solar, electric vehicle charging stations. I know you've had some discussion around that tonight, as well as a comprehensive set of floodplain design guidelines, and these are actually bylaws that we should, model bylaws that we should have available within the coming weeks for the communities to potentially adopt, should they choose to do so. And then pivoting a little bit to housing, this is certainly a focus and an area of crisis for much of the Cape, and as you may know, the commission has begun work on a regional housing strategy, which I think has already been mentioned this evening. We were pleased to receive some ARPA funding to move forward with a strategy for the region that will address housing supply, affordability, and availability issues, really by identifying areas that are appropriate for housing development, and maybe even more importantly, housing redevelopment, and identifying and creating policies and strategies really that are appropriate for the Cape. As I think you've already heard tonight, the, the median sales price for a single-family home as of March of this year was about $700,000, and the, the estimated annual income needed to afford that median sales price, single-family home, is about $210,000, where our median home, our, our median income is only about $82,000. So we've got some significant challenges. So this combined with the fact that we have very few available homes on the market, we have a lack of diversity in the market, 82% of our homes are single-family homes, so there are very limited other types of housing, and 30%, 37% of our housing stock is seasonal. So certainly, this just means that affordable and attainable housing is only getting further out of reach. So as part of that regional housing strategy, we are developing baseline data and information. So one of the other documents that I handed out is a profile for the Town of Yarmouth, so we have completed these for all 15 towns. There's one that also looks at Barnstable County comprehensively, and pulls together information, including demographics and economic information, information on the status of housing, zoning, typology in each of the communities, and really helps to establish that baseline for data and information so that we can set targets moving forward. We're also preparing a needs assessment so that we can have numbers of potential units that we may need across the, across the Cape. And that can, will also capture additional information with regard to housing needs, particularly as they relate to the region's workforce, our year-round residents, and in more, even more in particular, the, the house, the rental needs that we have. We've recently launched a housing survey, so that is available on our website. We issued a press release recently. Certainly would welcome anyone to take that survey. It's really around visual preferences and locations for additional multifamily housing, and certainly push that through your networks as, to the extent that you're available, are able to do so. We would certainly appreciate that. Like our freshwater initiative, the housing strategy also began with conversations with staff in all 15 communities. We've also begun our larger stakeholder outreach process that will accompany the regional housing strategy. So we want to make sure that we're engaging not only municipal leadership, but also in, in staff, but also the varying stakeholders within each of the communities, really to identify not only the challenges, but where those solutions can potentially be implemented across the Cape. So I would, just wanted to close my remarks by thanking you all for your support and for the collaborative relationship that we have with the town. We held our One Cape Summit last year for the first time in person in a few years down in Harwich in the summer, and I know some of you were able to attend. We are holding our One Cape Summit again this year on July 31st and August 1st. We just issued that save the date, so we'd certainly welcome any, any and all of you to attend. We'd love to have you there. And I just want to thank you for the opportunity to be here. I'm happy to answer questions if you have any, and I did just want to make sure that if Dennis Previnson wants to make any comments, that he has a chance to do so. So, thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody in the board have any questions or comments, or Kristi?
Do you want to start over here, Mr. Chairman? Sure.
I, I start from the county to the county.
Yeah, that's great. Dennis? I'd like to see if it's okay, Mr. Chairman, to get Dennis up here. He's been very shy, but we want to get a chance to say hello to Dennis, get him up here with Kristi.
I'd like to put you on the spot.
Yeah, we, we got to put you on the spot. So Dennis is our representative. We appoint him to represent us on the Cape Cod Commission, and historically, the, the selectmen's representatives have been, have played very, very important roles in terms of guiding the direction of the commission, but also in terms of just the day-to-day work of the commission, serving on the committees. And so we appreciate Dennis, your work on, on our behalf, and, and I hope I can speak for the entire board that if there are times when you need to come to us and update us on any specific initiative that the commission's doing, I hope you feel comfortable in, in letting us know, we'd be happy to get you on the agenda. I think what we're trying to demonstrate tonight is, is that we have a huge interest in all the representatives on county government, that the county does important work, and the Cape Cod Commission has an incredibly important role here on Cape Cod. You know, living on this sole source aquifer of ours, you know, how we manage our land uses is critical in terms of protecting our long-term water security, and, you know, and obviously people are well aware of the water quality work that the commission does, and how this new initiative working in, in, in the freshwater realm, that's going to be critical as well. So don't be shy about, you know, saying, hey, you know, you got to come before us. Or there's a hot project. Every now and then, there is a hot, you know, regulatory project, whether it's poorly suit, poorly designed cell towers that might be located in all the wrong places, or there could be other developments that might have regional impacts that we're concerned about. So we rely on you to flag for us projects that, that you think our, our town has issues with. I know our planning board, our planning department is not shy about letting us know. So, you know, my hope is, is that we, going forward, we can work well together and staying on top of some of these things. And part of the job is, is participating in the regulatory reviews and making sure that at least, you know, Yarmouth's concerns are getting heard by the commission, the other commissioners, but also the commission staff. So counting on you to continue to do that. You've done a great job, and, and we appreciate what you've done so far. My, my question for Kristi is, you know, just, it's not really a question, but it's just to say thank you. You know, one of the things that we don't have time to talk about is the outstanding work that's being done in a host of other areas. And I think it's important for us to acknowledge the work of the Transportation Department, the regular updates on the bridge program that Stephen does. They're incredible. The commission's role in sort of being actively involved in the bridge replacement projects, I think that's incredibly helpful Capewide. There are folks here in Yarmouth, just from one end of the Cape to the other, that really want to know what's going on. And the fact that you and the staff, and I see Sarah Colvin hiding in the back there, the fact that you play an active role in keeping us informed on what's going on is very much appreciated. But here in Yarmouth, the commission staff has done a great job in terms of its transportation analysis, and its studies. Obviously, we're very worried about station Ave and the corridor and the traffic implications there with added growth and development. And your team has been here for some public forums, and they've done a great job. They represent the commission well, they do great work, and we've benefited considerably already from their engagement here in Yarmouth. So again, it's, it's sort of thanks across the board from, for all the county departments, but also for the Cape Cod Commission. We really appreciate here in Yarmouth, all the work that you're doing for us, so thank you.
Thanks for that feedback, and I do have an incredible team, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Dan.
I couldn't add more to that. The fact that you're out all day long and then come here tonight, we really do appreciate your time and the work that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dorcas.
Thank you. Thank you to both of you for coming and, and talking to us this evening. I have to tell you, these materials are excellent. Well, very well done. Good explanation of what's going on with the commission. Thank you.
Kristi, thank you so much. We've been focusing more on the coastal embayments and, and rivers and so forth, but I would like to hear more as time goes on about the initiatives with, and, and the needs, and the expenses and projections with the cleanup of the freshwater ponds. As you said, there's something like 890 of them on the Cape, that's, that's going to be quite a, a chore. I'm sure there're not, there're various degrees of problems with, with, with each water body, but, and I'm sure there's going to be some kind of a phase in, in identification of critical, areas of critical concern, but I would like to hear more about that. We're, we're not quite there yet with the freshwater ones. We're still just, just getting done with our, our wastewater, our major wastewater project, but that's on the horizon. It's, those problems aren't going to go away, so we'd appreciate being enlightened on that.
Absolutely, happy to do so at your convenience.
Thank you, and thank you, Dennis, for your service. It's much appreciated. Did you want to introduce, you said you want to introduce someone before, Kristi?
Dennis. It was just Dennis, if you wanted to say if you...
It was Dennis, okay. Dennis wanted to hide out in the back there. We wanted to get him out here and...
All right.
In front of the cameras.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on.
So this is when we get to see Tony Bennett.
Yeah.
You were going to, going to have an appointment confirmation for Anthony Bennett, AKA...
He goes by, yeah, he goes by Anthony Bennett, yeah.
We had a, as you know, a vacancy in that office because our director, Amy Howell, went to another town. She had a position elsewhere, and my understanding is that Anthony has been, was the Assistant Director and has been the Acting Director in her absence, and so that he's being offered the position by our administrator to be the permanent full-time rec director, so...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, honestly, I'd like to add a couple of comments. I'm actually really very excited about this appointment. And again, the Director of Recreation is a division head-level position, so the way it works in the charter is, the board has 15 days to reject the appointment if you so desire, but we've attacked that, as you know, from an opposite direction and, and placed these appointments on, hopefully for the confirmation of the board, and I think it's a much more positive way to approach that. But as you've indicated, Anthony started with us as the Assistant Recreation Director, most recently since Amy's departure. He's been our Acting Recreation Director. He's doing a, a great job there. Anthony brings with him a master's degree in sports administration. He's got a very strong coaching and teaching background, solid recreational program experience, and I, I want to tell you, one of the most impressive traits about him is he is just so great with the kids, and not just the big kids, the small kids too. And the programs that he's put together, the feedback that we're receiving, his activity level, it's been impressive. It's been impressive to see him work. It's been impressive to see his work prior to this, down in the town of Falmouth, where he was very successful also. And I'm hoping very much that Anthony finds a home here in, in Yarmouth and, and stays with us for a long time, because the recreational programs already, you know, for this spring, things are off to a, a really great start, and so we're ve- very happy, and I'm enthusiastic to recommend Anthony for this position.
You have two people on this board that have pretty extensive experience in recreation. You probably know Dorcas most recently, but I was the chairman of that rec department for somewhere between 20 and 25 years, when it was a very small department, and it grew over the years with Pat Armstrong as the director, and then Linda Sears came on, and then Pat had left and she came back, so I call that Pat Two. And when we hired a director, Bob Lawton, who was the town administrator at the time, let me be involved in the interviewing process. So it was really remarkable to see the people come from all, we had probably 115 resumes. We didn't interview that many, but Bob allowed myself, on behalf of recreation, and Phil Whitten at the time, who was in parks, to participate in that interview process, and really ultimately to make the decision on who the director was becoming. And during that time, we also developed Old Town House Park. That was one of, that was one of the projects when I was the chairman. It's a very complex department, is, is what I'm getting at, and it's grown dramatically, and there's just so many more programs... at, and it's grown dramatically. And there's just so many more programs, there's so many more age groups that are being reached. And it's important work. I spent more than two decades doing it because I felt it was important, not just to kids, but to everybody. I mean, people need a place to go. They need healthy activities. The kids through proper coaching can learn so many lessons that carry them through life and help them overcome difficult challenges. And one of the things that, that I was happy about is that I lived long enough to see a lot of the kids that I coached as young kids who are now parents, Amy being one of them, Amy was one of my athletes, go on and have families and get into very important positions, not just within the town, but some of them are doctors, some of them are lawyers, some of them are architects. And just to talk about the great experiences they had through recreation and through athletic experiences, and them coming back and talking about the things they learned. It's just, just a great experience. To this day, I can't watch a Celtics game without getting all kinds of comments coming up on the screen. Coach, don't they believe in defense anymore? You know, I mean, these kids, and I spent a lot of my years on the women's side of the program. I coached boys as well, but more young women. So you got an important position. I hear great things about you. You certainly got a nice resume. And we're happy to have you. And I wish you the best of luck going forward. If you ever need any support or need any insight into the rec department, I'm well familiar with it, and I'd be happy to help you in any way.
Wonderful. That's great. And if I don't, if you don't mind, I just have a couple of comments.
We'd love to hear from you.
So first, I want to thank Bob and Bill for having faith in me to take over as acting for the last three months. I definitely can't leave out Ruthie, as well as other part-time staff who have been weathering the storm with me the last couple of months. You know, in January, I had a new daughter born, so a lot of.
Congratulations.
Thank you. A lot of new things going on at the beginning of this year. So without them, all of our other part-time staff, you know, they made my job a lot easier. So I appreciate the support from everyone there. And I'm really excited to, you know, continue to grow the programs and have people have those experiences and really build a good community with everyone who lives here.
You know, one of the things that I've always mentioned, and it just gives you a little bit of perspective on the job you do and the positive impact you can have on young people. One of my mantras used to always be when we were discussing whether we're going to get involved in new programs, whether we were going to expand, I always said, it's not enough to tell young people what not to do. You have to show them positive things that they can do to have fun and good experiences. Thou shalt not rule. I mean, that gets old real fast with kids. It's, you know, and you'll see that as you raise your own child, you know, you just want them to get into good, positive, enriching programs. And I'm sure that's a lot of what you're going to do as a director.
Anthony, like Mike, I've spent an awful lot, well, you saw me as recreation chair, actually, when you first came on board. I've heard nothing but good things about you. In fact, there's a unanimous support for you from the Recreation Commission that's among our paperwork for tonight. One of the things I love hearing is that you are open to hearing from everyone. No is not an option that you feel. I've heard that you are someone that takes charge. And when it comes up, you go and you take care of it. It's not something that's going to fester. And from various people in town, I just, as I say, I've heard nothing but really good. My concern now is going to be that we need to get you your assistant because you're coming into that time of the year, that's the most, when you're going to have the most challenges of all with the summer, with the camp opening up again, with the lifeguard situation, which always proves challenging. And I'll be there to support you all the way to be sure we get you your assistant as soon as possible. And I'm looking forward to, you're going to be coming back before the board, you and the Recreation Commission, at our first meeting in June. And I think that's a good time for you to be able to just kind of share with us what your challenges are going to be for this summer, you know, what your expectations are, and just to give us an opportunity to hear all that's going on. We all know now with COVID behind us that recreation has become a very important piece of these kids' lives. They don't have the social, we're seeing it. They don't have the social skills that they should at these age groups. Dan Horgan and I had the pleasure of meeting with a junior ethics class at DY High School, where they brought up these concerns and the concerns for needing a recreation center in town, someplace where, where all of these teens and children of all ages and adults as well can have a place to meet and not have all the demands on them at that spot, but to be able to really mingle and to have a chance to vent. So I'm really excited. I'm looking forward to it, to your tenure. And I'm here to help you in any way. And as I say, I'm going to be pushing for your assistant.
Thank you. Yeah, that's hugely important.
Thank you.
You know, there was a time when we just had a rec director and we didn't have an assistant, and it took years and years and years to get one. In fact, she never said it, but I think the reason that one of our rec directors left, who was an outstanding rec director, she went into teaching, took a teaching position in Mashpee, I think was because she was overwhelmed and didn't have an assistant. But there was many, many years when that was it. Just, we had the director and we kept advocating.
Anthony was our first one.
For an assistant, we finally got one, but it took a long time.
We have to get you a replacement.
I'm all for that.
I know the complexity of the department. You need a.
What the weight.
Yeah.
Do we have one motion? Motion to endorse the appointment?
Yep.
So Dan, you're making that motion. Dorcas, you second it? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. It's affirmed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I look forward to working with you.
Welcome aboard.
Have a good evening.
Congratulations, Anthony.
Thank you, Anthony. Thank you for staying late for us tonight, too.
So Board and Committee actions. Dorcas.
Yes.
We have Tony Kinnearina, Board Representative, David Cavatora.
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 That's right.
Cavatora.
A recommendation to appoint Mr. Cavatora as the Town of Yarmouth representative to the Tony Kent Arena Board. This appointment is for a three-year term, which will run through April 2026.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That carries unanimously. We have a Board of Appeals, Anthony Panabianco and Barbara Murphy.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, recommendation to appoint Mr. Panabianco and Ms. Murphy as alternate members to the Town of Yarmouth Board of Appeals. These appointments are for a one-year term, which will run through January of 2024.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? That carries unanimously. And now Library Board, is it Kellen? Kellen Bogel?
Yes.
Did I pronounce that right, Kellen?
Yes, you did. Very good. I have a recommendation, Mr. Chairman, to appoint Ms. Bogel as a regular member to the Library Board. This appointment is for a three-year term, which will run through February of 2026.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? That carries unanimously and brings us to the April 25, 2023 minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of April 25, 2023 minutes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Those minutes are approved unanimously, and we come up to Agenda Review. So we have no meeting on the 16th. There's an election, and the next meeting is the 23rd, which looks pretty full.
It's pretty full.
Then June 6. Is, is Rob Gallis himself going to come in?
That's what we understand, yeah.
Well, that's good. And then we got the draft charge of the Matickees Reuse Committee. Yeah, we got to get going on that. And then our recreation update that Dorcas just referenced. Anybody have anything? And then June.
Mr. Chairman.
There's the next meeting, so the 27th, 20, it's June 6, June 27. Yes, Dorcas?
I would recommend that Chris Greeley brought up a very interesting point for us this evening on the situation in Hyannis Park with the parking. And I think that that would be something that would warrant a spot on our agenda for the 6th of June to discuss in any ways we can remediate it before we're in full blast summer.
Okay. Anything else?
My only suggestion, Mr. Chairman, would be to maybe take one or two items off the 23rd and move them over to this.
Think we're a little too heavy there?
Looks pretty heavy.
Okay, let's look. Recognition of retirees. We got to keep Bray Farm, wedding, that won't be anything. New annual wine and malts, that shouldn't be a big deal. Change of manager should be easy. So it'd be Library Planning Committee, water rates discussion, that's tentative anyway, NIPS, bottle town meeting article, and Board of Selectmen.
The town meeting articles aren't really as time-sensitive, so we could discuss those on June. It wouldn't put us too far back.
Move town meeting articles?
Yeah, there's a couple of them that we're going to review, the NIPS. We're going to discuss the change of the name.
Yeah.
So what ones do you want to move? What do you think's appropriate to move? Which ones?
Bottles and Board of Selectmen change to Select Board.
So NIPS.
Because those are, those are for the fall town meeting.
Take, put that on the what, June 6?
Yeah, very next meeting, June 6.
June 6? Okay, let's do that.
Keeps them very current.
6, 6 on both. Yeah, that'll, that'll give us a little more breathing room on that one. And in, as you know, stuff can come up anyway that we might have to add.
Yeah, speaking of town meeting articles, I noticed that Brewster rejected the Plastics. And Brewster rejected, they had town meeting last night.
Let's see which.
Yeah, what's happening is, is.
Going back.
Yeah, the town, it wouldn't surprise me if there's a petitioned article to revisit that. Because I, I've heard, at least in my own circles, that some folks were disappointed with the way, and that turned out, at least the way the debate and the discussion went. And had they been aware.
Our businesses are going to be surrounded by vendors that do.
Right. I was shocked that Brewster rejected it.
Me too.
But that was pretty decisive. And in other communities, they've.
I think part of it's vetting, and I think the other part of it's timing. Mark, this business is still struggling in post-COVID.
Yeah.
So, all right, so we're going to do that. Anything else on Agenda Review? Okay, I don't have anything to add. I'm sure stuff will come up that we can, we can. Hey, County Night, we can take off the waiting list here.
We can take that off. Well, what did, what did you think?
Joint Transportation Committee, some of your delegates, county commissioners, Cape Cod Commission. We have everything but.
What did you think?
Everything but the codfish on there.
Wasn't it helpful?
It was helpful.
It was very helpful.
It went well. And they all.
Could have gone on.
They all budgeted their time pretty well. And, no, it was good. And, you know, it's good to meet them and have that relationship and talk to them about issues that we're concerned with and extend invitations to them. It was nice.
Especially Veteran Services and the RTA.
That guy's a talented speaker, I'll tell you right now.
He's good.
Very talented guy.
He's really good.
Impactful.
You want to get an article on the floor, you should bring him in.
Right.
He has a, he has just, he has a very, a very, what's the word I want to say? Effective way of communicating.
But I do think in the future, we're probably going to want to have a conversation with our administrator about that office and that department. The thing that I worry about are the Veteran Service Offices burning themselves out.
Yeah, yeah.
They literally work 24/7. Greg Quilty.
That can happen in any office if it's understaffed.
It certainly, it certainly can. And that's, that's a group of very, very talented and dedicated public servants that I worry about getting burnt out because they're just always putting themselves out there to help people. We've been blessed with incredible talent in that, in that area. And that's why, you know, having the chance to see and hear and talk to them, now when you come into contact with a veteran and their need of services, you now have, you've got the phone number, and now you've got a name to contact, you know, to associate with it. And, and you know that when you talk to Greg, he's going to do.
Get something done.
Exactly, exactly. So just having those.
You know the thing that he said that, that was quite, I'm trying to think of the word, it kind of gets to you, was he was talking about lack of staff with mental health workers. And he said, we go out to them and we do the best we can.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, even though he doesn't have the staff, even though he doesn't have the resources, he's not going to turn away from these people. He's going to go out there and do what he can do.
Well, that's what, that's what I worry about. But they don't have the time to pursue funding, grants.
Just like us with our social workers added to our police department so they could.
Right.
Have qualified people that address these problems that really aren't police problems, per se.
Yeah.
And that's, it sounds like that's what they need.
I think, yeah, I think it's worth an examination, you know, with the two bobs that we have here in Yarmouth that are so familiar with what they're doing. I do think they've been shy about asking for help. I don't think they want to ask for help, but they, they may need some help.
We meet with them, with all of the town managers as well. And we just had this past a couple of months ago now, a very detailed discussion about the staffing levels. And this year, they're staying the same, but we might be looking next year to boost that up.
Yeah. Well, that's great. That's good. That's good. And I, and I think this is a board that'll probably want to be.
Yeah.
Will be interested in what their needs are and where we might be able to do more. I believe that for the other support that they need, particularly in the mental health area, I just don't know if they're equipped to go out. I mean, our police department, they've gone after the money. Mass Department of Public Health has parked a good-sized bucket of money in, in their, in their programs. And our police department has gone after it. I think there's help that they could probably get. We just may need to find ways to help them go after some support. So that's why I'm glad we got, we were able to do this tonight. And I don't think we, on the public transit stuff, Mr. Chairman, I don't, it's amazing how many people in Yarmouth use the buses. And I know of a lot of people that, this is our, this Route 28 corridor, which we're focusing on for wastewater and water, is such a major transportation corridor. People going back and forth from where they live to go to work, to use the libraries, to come to Town Hall.
Really?
You know, it's, it's an incredibly valuable resource that we almost take for granted sometimes. So it's good to get them in here.
Individual items. Dorcas, anything?
No, I think just Chris Greeley's comments on parking. I think that's.
Dan?
No, thank you.
Mark?
Mr. Chairman, I want to, just to the extent that there, there's anybody still around watching on TV or in the audience, I just want to thank everybody for showing up at town meeting. And I want to thank all our town staff, our town administrator, the Water Resources Advisory Committee, the Assistant Town Administrator, and the Chamber of Commerce. I mean, there's so many groups that basically stepped up to play an active role in, in helping in helping us get Article 18 through. And to see the teamwork and the collaboration, everybody pitching in. And the amount of time that we as a board have spent on this, we've made this a priority. We've brought it up quite a bit. We've talked about it a lot. We spent a lot of time trying to go the regionalization route with other towns. We played a leadership role in that, but other towns were not ready yet to make the jump. And so we've had to sort of go on this track, go it alone, and now we're on this track. If others want to join in, we're ready to work with them. But I think it's been an incredible four years of work and energy. And I am just incredibly thankful for all of the people that have stepped up in small ways and in big ways to help get us to the point where, that was just an incredible vote. I remember vividly the 2011 vote. I was there. And I was, and I noticed right off the bat when we started having the debate on Article 18, that was like, I felt like the debate started where the last one had left off. With some, for the first two or three speakers, the old arguments popped up. But the audience had a very different reaction than before. Yarmouth voters took the time to read the material, to do their homework, to follow this topic. And it was incredible to see the level of engagement and support of the article, you know, on the town meeting floor. It was, it was just impressive. And so I have to thank everybody for showing up, and I wanted to get that out there. I do office hours first Fridays of every month, so I'm just making it, make folks aware, particularly if there are people that have questions about the letters I write or my positions on things. If they're interested in having a detailed discussion on any of this stuff, this Friday, 10:00 AM, Yarmouth Library, South Yarmouth Library, I'll be there. And I'll be happy to answer any questions, explain anything. If someone's going to complain or they don't understand how local government works, whatever it is, I'm there for folks. So that's.
Do they get cooked doughnuts?
I used to do that, but.
You end up eating them all?
Well, they would leave them mostly for me, so I got out of that habit pretty quickly. On May ninth, I believe, there's a chamber breakfast, legislative breakfast. I want to just remind folks, if there's an interest in going to the Yarmouth Chamber of Commerce, actually, it's Yarmouth Dennis Hyannis. All the chambers are hosting the legislative delegation. I highly recommend it. I don't know if other board members can go. I'm going to try to go. On May ninth, it's at the Red Jackets, starting at 7:30 in the morning. And be interested, I understand Senator Julian Seer is going to be there. Representative Chris Flanagan will be there. Representative Diggs will be there. Representative Exaros will be there. So we'll have very good representation from the Cape delegation. So I'm encouraging you all to go if you can make it. And my final individual item report is, as you know, I represent this board on the Cape and Islands Water Protection Fund. And the fund is an important component of our financing, of our overall wastewater program. And the demand for wastewater funding is growing on Cape Cod. The fund staff, which is Cape Cod Commission staff, the staff of the Cape Cod Commission staff the fund. And according to the most recent projections, over the next five years, towns on Cape Cod will be asking the state, they'll be asking their voters to approve one and a half billion dollars' worth of wastewater infrastructure investments. Now, that includes the Yarmouth piece. Later on this year, Barnstable is going to be asking the voters to approve $293 million. So the demand for all of this funding is growing. And it's growing beyond what the original expectations are. So there's a report being done for the fund. And I will, as soon as I get that information, I'm going to send it out to you so that you can see it. Obviously, our administrator and our team here in Town Hall will get it. But as soon as I get this information on the status of the fund and maybe some of the things that might need to be done to improve the financing of it, because like I said, the demand for dollars is growing. You know, I'll get that information to you because we as a board may need to act on a recommendation for next steps. Do we, if the demand is so great that we're having trouble keeping up with the obligations, do we need to scale back commitments that are being made for this fund? Or do we make a pitch for increasing resources? You know, whether it's an Airbnb tax or a rooms tax or another tax, do we look at ways to augment those resources to keep the fund to sustain the commitments that are being made? And work with our legislative delegation and the governor's office. As you know, we've had periodic meetings with the Lieutenant Governor, her staff, Environmental Affairs, talking about this issue, just to make them aware, update them on, you know, developments here on the Cape. And by the way, I did, on last Tuesday night, I did text the Lieutenant Governor and told her that the Yarmouth vote passed. And she sent me a text back congratulating us all on this, so. And she knows of the challenges that we're facing on the Cape, the need for more money. There was a resident who spoke at town meeting about the need for us to fight for more dough. So if that person's listening, I just want that person to know, we have never stopped fighting to get more money for Yarmouth. The plan that was developed was very, that was developed for Phase One, kept the taxpayers in mind. And I think as a board, we're going to want to continue to fight to make sure that we get more help from the state and the federal level for Phases Two, Three, Four, Five, and the rest of them. And we want to keep that up. So this is a discussion that's going to begin in earnest relatively soon. Because as towns around the Cape do what we do, and that's do the right thing, we need to really call on the state and the feds to become more partners, to do more, to partner with us, to help fulfill those obligations. So what that means financially, I don't know. But I know our first test of this challenge will be in the next couple of months when this Cape and Islands Water Fund, Water Protection Fund Board meets and discusses what our options are. And what we'll all be doing is going back to our respective boards to have a conversation, to have this discussion on what our next steps are, what our options are, and to get a consensus among various boards. We may even have a Cape and Islands Selectmen's Association meeting. Or what do we call it now? The Cape and Islands Municipal Leaders Association. So there'll be a lot more discussion of this, about the challenges and the need to get more money. And quite frankly, you know, is the way I look at it, is if the states are, I mean, we're hearing these reports of the state being awash in cash, right? Well.
Where's our piece?
Exactly.
Where's our piece of the pot?
Coalitions that are being formed to basically say, you know, we want this, we want that. You know, the state got, what, four or five billion dollars in ARPA funds? How much of that found its way here to Cape Cod, right? So I think we're going to need to step up the noise level. And I'm going to channel that gentleman that spoke on the Yarmouth Town Meeting floor that was angry about the state not doing enough. And channel it in a constructive way so that we can continue to advocate for our people. Because we deserve more help, and we should fight for more help. So those are my items. Thank you.
Okay. The only thing that I wanted to add, I wanted to extend the same congratulations that you did, Mark, to all the people involved in that historic vote last Tuesday. But, and when you talked about the 2011 failures versus what you saw last week, I think in fairness to everybody that was involved at that time, the administration, the board of selectmen, and the voters, we didn't have the financing piece that we have today. So I want to, you know, give a special thanks to everybody involved in that. That's what made this thing feasible. That's what made it attractive to voters using, you know, short-term rental tax monies and DIF monies and the county wastewater fund in limiting their participation to under 15% of the total cost. And in the communications that went out, multimedia, in the speaking engagements with our town administrator going to Chamber of Commerce meetings and reaching out to the business community, all of that impacted that vote. But that vote wasn't even close. It was darn near unanimous, if not unanimous. And the support was just overwhelming.
I counted three now.
It was absolutely overwhelming. And I think people voted for two reasons. One was they knew that the environmental degradation just couldn't be ignored any longer. I think that was a big environmental vote. No matter what the cost, I think the people were committed to the environment. And secondly, they thought the financing plan was sensible, and it wasn't going to break the bank with people.
Exactly.
And then, you know, having that in place, and I know you were on the team, Mark, the communications piece of it, that was extremely important. I mean, we had a good website update going. We had the flyers that were sent out to the houses. We had radio announcements that were being made. And as we discussed before, can you imagine if we did have the newspaper coverage that we had in the past? I mean, you know. So given that we didn't have that, I think we reached maximum feasible accomplishment with getting the word out with the mediums that we did have in place. So, and Bob did a great job on that. I thought he and Jeff did an outstanding job, both on the technical end and the financial end. And so I think it's a vote that the town's going to be proud of. And I think, you know, Yarmouth asserted some real leadership in wastewater. And I believe it, I think the demand for the county money is going to grow because people are going to line up and say, "It can be done." Look, they've done it.
Exactly.
You know? So again, that was a great, that was a great vote. That's all I have. Let's move on to the consent agenda.
Hollywood's coming to town.
Yes.
So I move the consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It carries unanimously. And now we're down to town administrator updates.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know a number of people have said it already, but I think just to follow up on that whole town meeting issue, you know, for me, it felt so great working with such a great team in a great town. And the bridges that we built throughout this process are permanent bridges. And, you know, whether it's working with the business community, I think the leadership of the board of selectmen was absolutely stellar all the way along. And the way, as a team, a lot of us that worked with the department heads, you know, folks just giving of themselves and working collaboratively. I mean, that's been our message, but you really sometimes need the pressure of such a huge project to drive people together. And, you know, the work that everyone did, it was fabulous. And, you know, Bill Scott also gets a tremendous amount of credit. And, but it was just so great for me to be able to work with a team like that in every segment of the community, individual people and the voters. And we had outreach to neighborhood organizations that we've never really even talked to that much before that now were, you know, friends and corresponding. So I thought that was great. And, you know, the other thing that was good is that now that wastewater has passed this past week, I've only had three wastewater meetings, and that's gone down tremendously from previous to that. So if we can keep them down to three or four meetings a week on wastewater, but it's a big project. Another item I wanted to bring up, we talked about the opioid. And the county's done a great job helping us get things together. Also, the YICAC, Yarmouth Substance Abuse Commission, Board of Health, everyone. And I've received the feedback from my outreach to the Attorney General's Office. And they've offered us three dates that I indicated that all would work May 22, 24, and 25. So that's before we get to the Memorial Day holiday. And we're trying to set up a meeting with the AG's office, first of all, to get a complete rundown on just what went wrong with that formula. How exactly did we wind up getting a third of similarly situated communities? And we're going to get the litigation team from the AG's offices going to be involved. And I think even more importantly, though, is, you know, we've sat down, our team has reviewed where we think that we should be relative to similarly situated communities. And where that is, is we're at roughly 275,000 per year. And we feel that the appropriate number is closer to a million. And we've had a team, and we've been working together to show, if we had those funds, what exactly would we be offering in direct services to our local residents to prevent opioid addiction? And we feel we have a very strong case. We have a great committee. We have some very strong ideas. And we're hoping that we can introduce those ideas. And it may be, the feedback I'm getting, that, you know, the litigation team nationally, and this doesn't want to reopen the litigation. But keep in mind, there's, you know, those millions and millions of dollars that went directly to the state, that they have the access. And if everyone agrees that we were shorted, I think that there may be the ability to use some alternate funds to help fund some of our programs. So I'd like to have maybe, you know, one or two members of the board be able to sit in with that. I told them I have a team of stakeholders that are critically concerned. They are the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Health, Substance Abuse Committee. And our administration will, you know, stop there for our initial meeting. But if we could have some folks participate in that, I'm just waiting to get from the AG's office. I told them the 22, 24, 25, we could make it work as soon as you could get your whole team together. And they're going to be letting us know this week.
That's great.
So I'll keep the board.
I'm happy to help if I'm needed.
Yeah, Mark, would be great. And if anyone else, we can probably have without posting it, two selectmen. And then we'll put it back on the agenda briefly.
I'll look at my schedule and see what it looks like.
And one last item that's kind of a burr in my style. I was a little upset with the issue with, you know, updating the town's fleet and the cars and everything. So obviously, you know, we're at the point now where we've got some cars to order. The building department is my number one, you know, they've got a ragtag group of cars that are breaking down left and right. They're all different models, colors, and we've got it all approved in the capital improvement program to replace these vehicles. Now, it's very important to me that we get the hybrid vehicles. You know, we're a green community. And, you know, we've also, we've done it with the police. We should do it with everyone, start moving this forward. Now, you know, the problem with the supply chain is ridiculous. First, we found out we couldn't get the green cars, right? And so we looked, we're trying to get the white cars. And now I'm told, you know, we reached out to, we get these from the state bid list. And so they're Fords coming right from the Ford factory. And they say they're loaded with the white gas models, but they're not making white or green, the hybrids. So we sat together as a team, and I wanted to make sure the board was comfortable that we wanted to do a pilot program for the building department. We have got five vehicles. We want to get the other ones off the road. We can get them all together in silver and do the green.
Banner.
Banner along the side, and that would be our pilot program that we would try to, you know, get the cars all the same color and keep, say, building will be silver. And then continue to work with the other departments to just make the colors, you know, by the functions, the same. you know, by the functions, the same. And so, anyways, that's the latest on the vehicles, and...
You mean, the departments, one department might have different colored vehicles than another department?
I wanna keep them in as big a chunks as possible, like the DPW cars should all be, you know, the same. We have a small administrative fleet down here. We're thinking of silver for that. Public Safety and Fire, they do their red, and the police have the black and whites.
So, you may have an easier time purchasing vehicles if you, the clusters are smaller? Is that it? And, but they might end up having to be the same color, but it may not be the white with the green banner. It may be another color. Is that what you're kinda saying, Bob?
Yeah, for now, we, the old green, they don't make. But we wanted to start with the silver. It's kinda close to the white. And we think with the banners on it, they'll be very recognizable, and we'll be able to tie them. But, you know, I don't wanna, you know, move into that for the DPW. We wanna still...
You wanna start, then they'll be hybrid.
And they'll be the hybrid cars. We can get them in that.
What's the turnaround time for that?
It's pretty quick with these cars. I think that it, maybe like a month or so, we can get them in.
Really?
That's great. Sounds good. Sounds good to me.
I wanted to let you know, and we're gonna continue to work with everybody. And our ideas, we're gonna bring people together around this issue of the vehicles, and it's a source of pride. We're just not gonna have all different color cars all over the place. We're gonna get the common banners. And people like the Capital Program Committee, I really appreciate all their work and input, too, so... But that's the latest, and that's all I have for tonight.
Okay, we have a motion adjourned?
Still moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.